Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Palo Alto City Council regular meeting of Monday, February 3rd, 2025. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman, Councilmember Lithgow-Hames.
Here.
Councilmember Rechtal.
Here.
Mayor Lowing.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vinker.
Here.
Councilmember Lou.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
For the record, all present.
Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes, additions, or deletions?
Thank you, Mayor. I did note specific changes other than to note that there was an amended agenda issued and that removes the interviews that were scheduled this evening. As such, your public agenda timing actually moved up quite a bit. So again, any member of the public who's watching and anticipated that there would be two hours of interviews that will be happening tomorrow night, not tonight, and as such, the other business items will be heard earlier than was originally published last week, or the week before, really.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. All right, the next item as normal is a public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And I understand we have a number of speakers?
Correct, Mayor. We have 11 requests to speak.
Okay, so we'll go to two minutes on that. And I've got, we got a number of emails about school district issues. And as you stated in your emails, a number of you did, we know, you know, and we know that that's not within our jurisdiction, but you're welcome to comment anything you like. So if you would start the lineup. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Claire E.
Hello. My name's Claire Elliott, and I'm a retired environmental engineer and a resident of the Ventura neighborhood since 1997. And I'm here mainly with some comments about the Bullware Park improvement plans. Early on, there was a lot of solicitation of input from the neighborhood, which I really appreciated, and I provided some input. And a lot of that got incorporated. My main disappointment was that somehow the park and the fries project couldn't be, couldn't coordinate in order to free the creek from its concrete channel and allow it to be in its natural channel again. So I hope someday that will be considered again. Also, after the meeting plans were finalized, I didn't see any kind of meeting to tell us what they were. And looking at the sign, not everything was clear. So I emailed Peter Jensen, the landscape architect, and asked him some questions. And one of them was about how the dog park was going to have astroturf. I was concerned about that. And he told me that the majority of dog owners requested that surfacing. Then I learned that it was also planned for the playground. And that concerned me even more because of the children's exposure on the playground to the volatilizing chemicals. I mean, some of the playing fields smell like a tire shop when you're out on them. I'm also concerned about the lifespan of the materials and where they will go when they're over, when that lifespan is over. So I hope that the city cannot do that in the future. I also am a strong proponent of native vegetation for supporting ecosystems. And I was happy to see many of the plants are native, but some of them listed were potentially invasive. So I'm hoping that the new landscape architect, when they're hired, a criteria might be that they have more skill in sustainable landscaping, both man-made materials and natural products. So that's where I'll leave it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Magdalena C., followed by Angela D.
Good evening. My name is Magdalena Cavereda, and I've lived across the street from John Bullware Park since 1988. As you are aware, the park is getting a major makeover. One week ago, I saw artificial turf being installed, much to my chagrin and dismay, honestly. How could the city of Palo Alto, and I mean this sincerely, so hip, so progressive and environmentally tuned in, be using artificial turf in the playground area where children, our children and grandchildren, will be inhaling and absorbing microplastics, nanoplastics, toxic off-gassing, and be potentially exposed to chemicals known to be endocrine disruptors and/or carcinogenic. In addition to the health hazards, artificial turf creates heat islands where the turf can get up to 140 degrees on a hot day. Added to this, none of the very active neighbors who are in the know about most things in our neighborhood were aware that artificial turf was going to be used. You must all be aware of the fact that the state of California and Santa Clara County are strongly considering banning the use of artificial turf due to health hazards. Even just on Friday, the Palo Alto Weekly had an article about turf wars. So our own city is considering the downsides of using artificial turf, and yet here it is being laid out in John Bullware Park. How can we knowingly add more pollutants and more plastics into the environment, period? But especially, how can we use these materials that are problematic at best and downright dangerous to all of us at worst? They are especially dangerous to children whose young bodies and brains are developing and growing. In my humble opinion, it is unacceptable, outrageous, and even preposterous that the city would deem the pros of using plastic turf so compelling.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, I appreciate your attention to this matter.
Our next speaker is Angela D., followed by Carla H.
Hi, I'm another resident of the Ventura neighborhood. My name's Angela Delaporta. I'm speaking about the artificial turf in Bullware Park. So 35 years ago, when my daughter was a toddler, I gave her milk in a plastic bottle. And I ventured to say that if some of you are as old as I am, you might have done so too. But now, of course, I know the dangers of cancer-causing BPAs and the forever chemicals that are in plastics. Now, I know that dangerous microplastics are proliferating in our environment and are entering our bodies at unacceptable, unprecedented rates. And now I know that healthy, reusable alternatives are available. My daughter has made sure I know about that because she has a baby now, too. And I wouldn't dream of giving my grandchildren their milk in a plastic bottle. Yeah, my daughter wouldn't let me. I use a glass bottle with a protective silicone for gripping. And I'll bet, since you know better than I did 35 years ago, you do too, or you will too. I also do my best to mitigate the harm done to our environment by overpackaging, by limiting my purchase of plastics as much as possible, using washable cotton bags when I buy vegetables, and storing leftovers in glass or silicone containers. The artificial turf is removable. It's not a done deal. There's no excuse, neither cost nor convenience, for exposing our neighborhood and our children to microplastics when there are clearly excellent alternatives, such as, for example, the wood mulch used at the ballpark playground. We who live in the neighborhood are hoping that you will direct the appropriate department to replace the plastic turf that is there now with a healthy alternative. Our kids deserve it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carla H., followed by Lisa M.
Hello, Council. My name is Carla Ray, and I'm also a resident of Ventura neighborhood for 35 years. And I personally like grass. I want to put the blanket down on the grass, have a picnic. I don't want to put a blanket down on the turf. It's just, I'm coming from more an aesthetic point of view. We've got this, all this new beautiful stuff, and I just really want grass. Also, we raise bees. We have bees. And you often will see the bees in the grass. And the bees are struggling, as you probably know. So also, the endocrine disruption of the plastic is a concern for babies and little kids. So yes, I would love to have grass or something safer than the plastic stuff that gets so hot, too. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa M., followed by Liz G. Moving to our next speaker, Liz G., followed by Jennifer D.
So now can we have three minutes? There's less than 11 people.
No, it's consistent for each member of the public.
But there's less than 11 people.
It's two minutes.
Hi, I'm a tenant at a 70-unit tax credit building at a for-profit related Mayfield place at 2500 El Camino Real Palo Alto. This was part of the Mayfield Agreement of 2013. It's a very low-income families, live here and work hard in mainly service jobs. And we work hard to pay our rents. And many of us are not English-speaking and are immigrants from other countries. I have been attempting to get the property to address some health and safety and fair housing issues. One, insufficient hot water. Paying higher for hot water laundry prices is not, and it is not code temperature. There's black greasy flux in the water. There's third-floor compromised concrete. They've been raising rents after 11 months of 11% or more and not getting our $35 a year utility credit. The property is also making me sign erroneous documents to release private social security information. Currently, I'm forced to boil water on my stove to get the water at a sanitary temperature. As well, I am in the middle of recertifying for the complex so that related can get their yearly tax credit. There are a lot of things that seem not right with how they are going about extracting documentation and verifications with threatening posts on our doors for evictions, for not turning in paperwork, telling tenants they're going to turn them into, into the foster care, or that they're going to be evicted for not turning in certain things in a certain amount of time. There are questions I have about the frequencies of these rents. And I and other tenants are not, of course, getting that utility. I'm not sure what resources or direction I can take. Of course, we are extremely low income, and I am a Section 8 voucher holder as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer D., followed by Michael M. Our next speaker is Michael M.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council. Want to introduce you, introduce myself to some of you and say hello again to those others.
Getting really close to the mic.
I will think. Can we start my time again?
Hi, my name is. You can start over.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. My name's Michael Masak, a resident of the Palo Alto and a tenant over the Palo Alto Airport. I've come before you, before this body before. But I want to, for two reasons, I've come to, first of all, thank the city, Public Works Department, and specifically the Palo Alto Airport Operations. I run an organization called Bay Area Urban Eagles. What we do is expose young people and young adults to opportunities in aviation that they typically wouldn't have an opportunity to have. The city's been very, very supportive of us. As I said, I'm a tenant. We were able to, to work with the operations team and get a facility, a facility small enough to, to, to teach, to use as a meeting area. Again, this is primarily for young, young adults. We've had a couple of, we're on our second cohort of ground school, and it's all free. Everything we do is no cost to our students. So I said, we are a nonprofit organization. I'm going to keep this to 30 seconds. The, we've got an event that we are running called Meet the Pros this year, 2025, is women, professional women in aviation. The memo didn't get out to you all, so I came with a memo for you. Again, it's Meet the Pros. If you have a camera, a phone, you could scan that QR code real quick. It'll take you to the eVite. We would really love to have representation from the city of Palo Alto. We do have some other electeds from the state, county, and would again love to have you attend. Thank you very much for your attention. Thanks for the opportunity. Thanks for your support.
Our next speaker is Jennifer L., followed by Alan C.
Hello, Council, City Manager. Just want to say that this year's annual priorities retreat was one of the best I have observed in 10 years of attending. I was intrigued with your substituting the term "health" with wellness in the city's priorities. They are two very different terms. Health in public policy usually involves specific scientific findings to act or intervene on behalf of the public. Wellness, on the other hand, as some of you have may have pointed out, involves prevention and is actually more proactive. So I definitely applaud this approach. As regards aviation noise, Palo Alto residents have been asking the city to address nighttime operations. And I look forward to returning to expand on why this topic and sleep continue to be important to your constituents, and how you can be proactive this year with actions specific to nighttime operations, and in the spirit of promoting wellness. In general, the public safety and wellness priority is especially suited for tracking how proactive you are to be responsive to community concerns. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan C.
Hi, it's Alan Crystal here. I've been here since 1980. And I have never seen anything like this in Palo Alto, the way one of our residents and an elected official is being treated. I know, and you said it, that the council doesn't get involved in school district matters, and I respect that. But I think this is a community matter, and I really would ask you to consider it as a community matter. This is how we treat each other as a community. We don't cancel our fellow residents and elected officials. And yet, that is exactly what's happening today. The city elected, we, the citizens, elected our board for the Palo Alto Unified School District. And we had a very contentious board meeting. You probably read about it last week. And one of the board members was verbally attacked at the meeting, Rowena Chu. It was a hostile environment. She spoke, and yet she spoke respectfully and asked good questions. In short, she was doing her job. But there was an atmosphere of intimidation, and she said so. She said she felt unsafe. But a school administrator effectively told her she had no right to say she felt unsafe. After the meeting, Rowena defended herself by forwarding a tweet online. Then the online mob attacked her and effectively said she was supporting racists. Then people ganged up on her. A group of former trustees called for her to resign, and so did the management association of the school district. This includes principals at the schools where her children are going to school. I call this intimidation. It's terrible. This is not Palo Alto. And I'm calling for you, the city council, to speak up and condemn this behavior. There should be a resolution condemning this. We do not cancel people in Palo Alto, not when they're doing their jobs and in a respectful manner. Please don't let this happen in our community. The city needs to know that this council does not support this. Palo Alto is about dialogue and engagement, not about this kind of behavior. Thanks.
And our final speaker is Jennifer D.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Jennifer DeBrienza. I think you know I spent eight years as a trustee in our school districts. Our job was to make sure we acted in a way that we could be entrusted with the students, the staff, and the finances of the district. That doesn't always mean making popular decisions. And very often, as I'm sure you know in this room, that meant very, very tense meetings. You have gotten communication today, a lot about concerns about anti-Asian hate in the community, or about canceling somebody in the community. I want to start by saying that Asian hate exists. It exists across America, and it exists here in our town. It's exactly why our school district is pushing so hard for the DEI work, our SWIFT plan, and the Ethnic Studies course that they just reaffirmed. This work is important, and its impact is real. What I want to point out is that the incident is solely about a trustee, one of the five most powerful individuals in the district, blasting a district employee who reports up the system to her on a social media site on a hate-filled page. Ms. Chu did not like her perception of how she was treated in a meeting. And I'm happy to talk to any of you about what happened in that meeting. It is all on YouTube. It can be watched closely. And a, and an accusation that, that someone said that Asians cannot feel unsafe or discriminated against, you will see on the YouTube video that is not what happened. But she didn't like feeling uncomfortable in the room, which I know you all know, happens very much in a public meeting, and felt a staff member minimized it. And rather than going to the staff member directly, or going to the superintendent to discuss it, or going to HR, or going through any other channel that would acknowledge that she is at the top of the system, she decided to take it to Twitter. And to take a tweet that included the employee's name, image, and information about her, and to comment on it and retweet it twice.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We now move to councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. Councilmember Rechtal?
Yeah, public comment. There's some people talking about Bullware Park and artificial turf. And what would be the route if we wanted to address that? Would we have to agendize that? Can we refer to Parks and Rec? Or what would be the process? Well, you could do, well, any of the above. But at this point, staff has received the concerns raised and is putting together some response. And we'll be doing some outreach with the immediate neighbors. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
Hey, Ms. Mayor. Just to announce, last, last week, I was elected as the chair of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. And we're looking forward to really advancing, especially the Reach Two Project, over the next couple of years in order to finally bring much-needed flood mitigation and protections to the many residents that live along the creek corridor, both here in Palo Alto and in our neighboring communities. And so looking forward to updating the community on when there are going to be those opportunities to be able to kind of weigh in on the Reach Two Project, and to be able to assist the JPA and the city in moving that forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. I just want to share that last week, I was elected, selected by the County Cities Association to be their representative on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And I think most of you are. And I think most of you are pretty familiar with the commission, but in addition to its really being the Umbrella Agency for Transportation Initiatives and Funding in the eight-county Bay Area, seven-county Bay Area. They also have the responsibility for the Housing Finance Authority for the region, the Infrastructure Financing Authority, the Toll Bridge Authority, and Service Authority for Freeways and Expressways. So it's pretty broad purview. The, one of the major tasks this coming year will be looking at the prospect of a, how to fund regional transportation needs. So I look forward to representing us and, and the cities in the county on that. I will note that that position also carries with it. I will continue on the VTA Board as an ex-official member and be able to continue representing us on the Caltrain Board. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Thank you. Well, it's been a while since we could report out, so I have a few things to report out. I'll try to be brief. The first is that I serve as Palo Alto's Commissioner to the Northern California Power Agency. So I attended the January NCPA Commission Meeting, as you know, because I was there when I did the last council meeting from the hotel room in Sacramento, but we also had a Strategic Issues Conference there. And that conference had presentations by legislators, state agency leaders, and experts, and I had the good fortune of introducing at the conference Cliff Recshoffen, who's a board member of the California Air Resources Board, better known as CARB. And he talked about the interplay between climate policy and energy policy, which, as we know in this town, is substantial. I'm going to skip over what else was discussed at the conference. People can see me if they'd like to know. But the commission did act on a couple of key items. We accepted a $5 million conditional grant funding agreement toward five NCPA hydroelectric projects, which that is what the city uses. NCPA runs a variety of electric generation facilities. We use the hydro. We appointed Melissa Price, who's the Assistant Electric Utility Director for the City of Lodi, as the Chair of the Finance Committee, and approved various other contracts. But also of note, following the retirement of our Utilities Director Dean Bachelor, the alternate NCPA Commissioners for Palo Alto, as appointed by the mayor, are now UAC Chair Greg Scharf and Assistant City Manager Kylie Nozay. Okay, second. Also that week in Sacramento, I attended the California League of Cities Conference, and in particular, want to talk about the Public Safety Committee because it is a statewide committee to which I've been appointed. And we had an agenda there. Very interesting meeting because it was council members like we on the dais, but also people in emergency operations, police chiefs, fire chiefs, so it's quite an interesting conversation statewide. We talked about, we had an emergency operations roundtable. We also talked about Prop 36 implementation, and we had a legislative wrap-up. So that was quite informative. Again, happy to talk to anyone in more detail. Came home that week, on that, on that Friday, the Peninsula Division of the League of California Cities hosted a legislative panel. I want to thank Mayor Lowing, Councilmember Burt, and Councilmember Lou for attending. I sit on the Executive Committee, and I'm the Legislative Action Co-Chair, so I helped put that together and moderated the panel of five Assembly Members, Berman, Colra, Pellerin, Papin, and Aaron's. It was really interesting because they gave us the current, what's going on in Sacramento, and also what's of concern in 2025 around issues like insurance after the fires, housing after the fires, the budget after the fires, and the special session that was called by the governor about wildfires. Finally, at the same meeting as Councilmember Burt was appointed to MTC, I was reappointed to the, I would say, BACMID Board, but we have, we rebranded to make it shorter, and unfortunately, it's now the BAD Board. It's the Bay Area Air District Board of Directors, which is a good thing because it was the day after our all-day retreat of that board, and so we're setting our priorities for the year. And I will refrain from discussing the details, but I think I just have to note that the things we're all witnessing in Washington and the dismantling of the federal government have a lot of implications for Palo Altons right here, right now. And I'm very glad to be on a dais with such able people who will be able to navigate that during this year because I think we're going to have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to wish everyone a Happy Black History Month. Black History Month is February every year. Some people say, why do we have to have a Black History Month? Well, it's because historically, black folks' contributions and experiences were underrepresented in the telling of American history, and so many, many, many years ago, it was decided that there would be a special focus on this month. And I think the city's, the school district's conversation about ethnic studies is a reflection of the yearning for a more accurate telling of history. To be told, we all benefit from that, I do believe. I was overjoyed to attend my first Lunar New Year event here in Palo Alto. It's been going on for a long time, obviously. I found myself there for the first time this year and was stunned by the sheer volume of human beings who came out on that day to celebrate, and from the very young to the very old, performances, booths, information, food. It was so joyful. Anyone who's hearing this who hasn't made it out for the Lunar New Year event, be sure not to miss it next year. Many of us attended the swearing-in of our new supervisor in Santa Clara County District Five, Margaret Abey Koga. It was an incredible event, lots of support for our new supervisor, and I know we're all looking forward to working with her to ensure that Palo Alto and the county are collaborating in the most effective, mutually beneficial ways on behalf of the residents we serve. And finally, a few of us attended the swearing-in, or the pinning ceremony, I should say, for nine new cadets in our Palo Alto Fire Department. They are now, I believe, cadet, probationary cadets. They served 14 grueling weeks in the Sunnyvale Academy, some of them an additional eight weeks if they're also taking on the EMT work. And it was a beautiful ceremony where I think two of our new cadets were actually pinned by their dads. Am I missing one, city manager? Were there three? Okay, I'm remembering former captain, who retired in 2019. His son was pinned, and then our current chief, Gio Blackshire, his son was pinned. And so to see what has always been the case in firefighting in America, that often there is an intergenerational handing down of the tradition from, from one generation to the next, to see that also happening here in Palo Alto with two black families, no less, which is unusual in firefighting, speaks to how far we've come and how far, how in many ways we do lead as a city in, in ways people may not always appreciate. So I know we're all proud of our firefighting team, was able to chat with one gentleman who had been down to Los Angeles and said he just stood guard on PCH for 18 days, trying to battle that thing, and was a resource for people who were trying to come back and see if their homes had made it. And you could see the emotion in his face, the pride as well, that he and his colleagues, our colleagues here in the city, were able to do that work. And none of us need doubt that Palo Alto is playing its part when it comes to addressing wildfire disaster and showing up for others as we hope they will show up for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple as well. Tag teaming with, to my colleagues here, I attended the City Association of Santa Clara County in my new board seat that comes with this seat. And therefore, I was on the selection committee so I could vote for these two colleagues of mine in a very competitive race. And as you heard, they both won, so we're delighted to do that, frankly, for the good of the county, not just for the good of the city, because they're, they're well-deserved and they were well-qualified compared to the competitors. And Vicki, forever will be on the BAD Committee, no matter what happens. I was going to, we're always going to- And others have commented on the other things in the county. I had five different county meetings last week, so it was a busy week with the county, getting to know the new lineup over there. I have one very happy announcement to make. As everybody knows, we've been working on, with Caltrans on their bike safety lanes, and the ad hoc, without much leverage, was able to negotiate a number of enhancements to what they had planned and mitigations of some of the potential safety issues on this, you know, major artery that goes through our town. We learned recently that the enhancement that we negotiated means that they had to move the whole discussion to the California Transportation Commission to get additional funding. So staff and I collaborated on the, on the letter. It went out under my signature to CTC in advance of that consideration, asking and appealing for that. And I heard Friday directly from the Chair, Carl Gradino, that the CTC approved $9.5 million to get all of the items that we had requested. So we can all, you know, clap for ourselves, I guess, in terms of the work it took to get there and the cooperation that we were able to get out of Caltrans right on up to getting approval. So it's good news for Palo Alto and for anybody that's going to bike there or live there pretty soon. So. And the only other thing I'll say is that the Committee and Liaison assignments are either going to be out tonight before midnight or after midnight, or tomorrow morning, based on-
We're just making some formatting change to the council assignments list, but we should have it to the council members, either late tonight or early tomorrow morning.
Yep. As you know, we delayed those intentionally to have the retreat and sort out the ad hocks, and it turned out that we did drop two or three committees, and there were also a few, what should we say, items that were sort of put in mothballs temporarily that were on that liaison list, like the, what's that called again? The El Camino Real Grand Boulevard, which can easily be addressed now in the, sort of the vision that we have for the quarter there around the housing focus area. So we trimmed that up a little bit. If there are errors or omissions, come to me about that, because it's not my house's fault, it's mine if there's any problems there. And, you know, we like these to last for the whole year, but they don't have to. If there's shifts that have to happen, then we'll make, we'll be nimble and make them happen. Okay, thank you. And now we go to the consent calendar. Do we have any council member comments on items that they would like to vote? No one? Seeing no lights, then seeing no lights, then we need a motion to approve. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. I was getting too excited there.
We have one request to speak, Armando M.
Mean honor, Mayor, and distinguished city council members. My name is Armando Murillo. I'm a field representative with the Northern California Carpenter Union with Local 405, which covers the beautiful city of Palo Alto. I'm here today to speak about labor compliance, which is an issue we must always bear in mind when we're awarding municipal construction contracts, such as contract number C25191929, which is before us this evening, because labor compliance is contingent upon public work projects. It is a known fact that there simply are not enough labor compliance officers in this country, least of all in California, to police up the bad practices of those contractors and developers who seek to do business in our cities for the sake of profit with a disregard for the men and women who build our vibrant communities. So when we speak of labor compliance, we are talking about fairness for workers on public works projects, ensuring that workers' rights are always protected. Also, as a reminder, labor compliance includes paying a prevailing wage on these projects and not misclassifying workers, which leads to tax fraud and wage theft. Apprentices, too, ensuring that apprentices from certified apprenticeship programs are employed in the proper ratio to journeymen. Apprenticeship programs are very important. As Councilmember Lithgow-Hames stated, you know, many firemen were pinning their sons, you know, it's great to continue tradition as well with regard to carpenter apprenticeship programs. And certified payrolls, ensuring that payrolls are accurate and conform to the state and federal labor laws. Lastly, equal employment. We must ensure that employees are treated equally and free from all forms of discrimination and harassment. In short, labor, labor compliance equals integrity, which boils down to doing the right thing, even when no one is watching or having to be told to do so. Thank you for your time.
Mike, please. Public comment on consent calendar items two through six.
Okay, back to the council. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moves? Yeah. I meant to weigh in with a no after public comment. I'm sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. In light of the concerns that have been raised about item four, I'm going to register a no vote. Thank you.
We need a second for this motion.
Second.
Motion's posted.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to speak to my no vote. My impression is that the contractee, Alex Kushner General, may not be a signatory with NorCalCarpenters, which is why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Okay, now the city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. When the city clerk is ready, go through just a few slides here. Thank you. Let's go to the next slide. All right. First off, I just really want to call folks' attention to the weather for the week. There has been an expectation of the atmospheric river extending through Tuesday and potentially through Wednesday. Importantly, to note that while the Bay Area more broadly may experience some flooding, the forecast for the Palo Alto area specifically is low in terms of any potential for flooding. That said, being an atmospheric river, we do intend to keep a close watch on conditions as they develop, and should there be any change, we'll be advising the community. Next slide, please. A few notable Police Department updates. First off, in response to retail theft issues that have been occurring throughout the Bay Area, do want to acknowledge that the Police Department is focusing on this currently and has had a significant number of both arrests and reduction in observed incidents. Second, that as relates to immigration status, there has been obviously a great deal of interest nationwide on this topic. So let me just briefly read this. That the Palo Alto Police Department Policy and State Law prohibit cooperation with federal authorities for the purpose of immigration enforcement. Department Policy expressly forbids officers from inquiring about an individual's immigration status for purposes of immigration enforcement. Hope that provides some assurance to residents as to our stance as it relates to issues that are occurring with ICE, both regionally and nationally. Then finally, as it relates to traffic enforcement, the department has initiated the relaunch of the traffic enforcement team, and so you will see them around town in upcoming weeks and months. Next slide, please. Then just really providing a quick flyover of a busy February for community engagement and activities scheduled through the city, ranging from community events to a few outreach meetings occurring, noting the third bullet here, stream corridor ordinance, and other upcoming events. And other upcoming events throughout the month. Information on this are provided on the city's website. Next slide, please. And then finally, going through a few of your upcoming agendas. Next week, we have a study session on homelessness in Palo Alto. Your annual item related to weed abatement and council action anticipated on three, two, six, five El Camino Real proposed development. Then no city council meeting the following week with President's Day holiday. Next meeting will be on February twenty fourth, and we have scheduled your midyear budget review, a follow up on council priorities objectives. And actually, that third bullet is not on that February twenty fourth agenda. And we do plan study sessions for your special events calendar as well as the safe streets for all. And in fact, no, that one got bumped as well. My apologies, though, that last study session is not on February twenty fourth. I believe it is on March third with your housing element program implementation items. And then a number of items scheduled from March tenth and beyond. Oh, did want to note with the midyear budget upcoming that we have staff has received, we know the city council has received a number of public inquiries related to Fire Station Four. Did want to advise community and council that staff is working up a potential proposal for city council consideration. As part of your budget, midyear budget review that would allow us to make some improvements with additional staffing. And again, we're really working out the details on that proposal, so we'll have more for you as the packet for February fourth comes together. And that completes my comments for this evening.
Thank you very much, Lady Manager, particularly those with respect to public safety. Update on the police department and and the fire progress. Both very much front burner in all of our lives, not just because of the fires, but because of, you know, everything that's happening around us. Okay, the, I was going to do on a break now, but we're running ahead. And so with with colleagues permission, I think we should keep going and get to the next item and. See if we can move through that one, or if not, we can take a break in the middle of that so we can change chairs here.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, Vice Mayor Venker and members of the council, Steve Wuglerato, Assistant to the City Manager, responsible for economic development, joined here by my colleague Bruce Fikujie. So just off the top, what we're here to do tonight is discuss Car Free California Avenue, provide an update and receive potential direction from the city council. This is really the next step in a long process we've had for California Avenue. Over twenty twenty four, we met with the retail committee and provided updates a few times. And we also met frequently with former council member Lydia Koo, who attended multiple California Avenue business meetings with us. With the departure of Councilmember Koo from the council, it seems an appropriate time to bring everybody on council up to speed with where we're at in terms of staff efforts related to California Avenue. And receive general feedback from the council. One important thing to note through the presentation is that until formal action is taken to close the street on a permanent basis. A lot of the work we're discussing tonight is preliminary. That action is underway. We will be going to the PTC later this month to discuss the SEQA analysis necessary to permanently close the street. And then anticipate returning to council in March for formal action on that item. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Bruce Fikujie to run us through the PowerPoint.
Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor. Really an honor to be here. I'm really glad we have an opportunity to actually walk you through all the work that's been done over the last year on Car Free California Avenue. I don't want to advance this. I'll just tell them they'll do. Okay, great. All right. Thank you. All right. So I want to just start off just on the status of the near term project improvements that are going on. I think it'd be helpful just to see how much work's been done on that. And we're very excited that construction work on the near term improvements on Cal Avenue will be starting this month. On February eighteenth, it'll be about a six weeks construction period, and that's to do the repaving, decorative paving. And bollards and planters and basically replace all the temporary elements that are on Cal Avenue now between El Camino and Birch Street and Ash Street. So we're really excited about that. The Caltrans encroachment permit work is continuing to advance. Those improvements are for the intersection. At California Avenue El Camino to be able to make bike improvements, to be able to link up the west side, the east side, the west side of California Avenue and. And California Avenue. So we're excited that's going to be happening right away. And as Steve has mentioned, advancing the permanent closure of the street. We're going to be going to, we're seeing two actions, and they'll be amending the comprehensive plan, circulation element. And then addendum to the comp plan E I R. That's the environmental document for that. And it's clear when we went through that that there are no new significant impacts related to the permanent closure of the California Avenue. And so that's going to go before the planning commission on February twelfth and then to city council in March. So we're very excited about that because that first step is a big step in being able to move all the subsequent projects forward. And then on the car free street design status, I'm just going to go over a bit on stakeholder engagement. Signage and wayfinding, outdoor activation and the alternatives and and next steps. So the stakeholder engagement has been pretty extensive. I've been very grateful. It has been the retail committee and several of you participated in that. Which has been very helpful on a regular basis for meeting. And our former council member Lydia, who was involved in all of our meetings that we had monthly with merchants, which I think has been really. Great to have council direction and commitment to advancing those discussions. You know, there's a lot that's gone on. I'm not going to go through and sort of summarize all the different meetings that we've had. But I think that what's been really important is that there's really been a trust building exercise that's been going on. I think it's been very helpful. And we've been really listening and involved in directly meeting with business owners and property owners and merchants. And also doing outreach with community members, both in person meetings and also online meetings and also the survey that we've done. And I think that some of the meetings we had at the third Thursday was very, very good for being able to meet people in person, a hundred people or so, or talk with us directly about what was going on. And also having some neighborhood meetings too, especially the Evergreen Block Party was really wonderful to meet the folks of that community. And it was very, we were very welcome there, and I really appreciated that, really got to have firsthand knowledge about people's experience and how they care about California Avenue, what it means to them and what they would like to see happen there. So we can answer more questions about stakeholder engagement, but I want to just continue in my brief presentation next. You know, one of the the main things that we were asked to do as part of council direction when we got started is to look at what to do about signage and wayfinding and brand identity. We did our urban field studio did a very good job of coming up with three different concepts. We presented those to the merchants. We also did an extensive online survey. There's over nine hundred and thirty people responded to that survey. In looking at a select three different alternatives that were covered in the staff report, and they're also in the attachments to the staff report. But modern optimism was really identified as a preferred concept because it it's friendly, warm, accessible, easy to read. And it's fun and it's artistic and it's contemporary in how it's it's character. And so that identity has a logo, tagline, color palette. And then we've asked our consultants to say, okay, can you create templates for how that sort of brand identity can be applied? To a variety of sign types that are needed in order to really enhance the wayfinding for California Avenue. And I'll talk about wayfinding in just just a moment. So we identified several important signs that would be very essential for being able to do that. So we created a series of examples of modular flexible design. And here's, you can see in this slide here at all different scales. One of the key things about wayfinding is whether you're driving or whether you're walking, how you have to look at where signs fit in their context in terms of their size and visibility and distance and readability. So we created a kind of network of signs that would be able to help people get to Cal Avenue. And once they get to Cal Avenue, once they get to parking, how to navigate there, and I'll go on that in a second. But the thing we like about these things, the color palette, I think it's really attractive. I think the logo is very clear and it's very easy to read. And has a variety of ways of being able to organize these signs at different scales to be able to help communicate well. And so what our next steps are with that, and I think it's important to see that this is really a design concept and templates. And it needs to have a review by the Architecture Review Board and one of PTC just to talk about sign locations in particular. But once we have some of that review, have your comments and feedback, then it would go through a process of working with different contractors to be able to. Look at what the costs are and how to put a program together. Next slide. Yeah, I think just really briefly, you know, the key thing for wayfinding is navigational cues. We've looked at different concepts for a gateway sign. That was an important sign that we were looking at what to do. Being able to announce the identity of California Avenue as a whole to create place identity. And then navigating people to parking and then from parking areas, how to find the pedestrian routes that take you to Cal Avenue. And then once you arrive at Cal Avenue, how to find your destinations there. And so there's a variety of signs that support that. Once you're on Cal Avenue, there would be directory signs would be able to help you identify all the different resources and opportunities for being able to enjoy and spend time on Cal Avenue. Next. I think the most important thing I want to really discuss with you is is actually the idea about outdoor activation and street space zones. I mean, what's special about California Avenue as a car free street is that you can do a lot of things that you can't do on a street with with cars and parklets. And one of the things that's really what we really want to see, we talked about it on the staff reports, is how do you create the the social environment that is attractive? And at the same time, it invites people for social engagement. And a lot of that is about being able to see people and be seen and to look at the street as how to be an open environment. Where it's easy to be able to to walk around and to hear and see other people and the activities that are going on the street. So to do that, we've looked at how to divide the street really into five primary zones. And this is a cross section through California Avenue, which is ninety feet. It's quite wide as a street. It's a frontage zone where right adjacent to the to the buildings. And the the business establishments, pedestrian zone for being able to walk along the street, a zone for really street furniture. And then an activity zone and then access zone. And I want to go in more detail about the activity and access zones. But by looking at the street in this way, there's a lot of different ways to be able to move these elements around. But these basic components are what are needed in order to to shape an active pedestrian environment. Next slide, please. So the other part of it is that's how to think about the cross section of the street. But the other part is to to look at how do you establish these activity zones? I mean, I think an important thing about California Avenue as a car free street is that one of the first steps will be to. Repave or resurface the street and remove all the traffic markings. And when you do that, you don't have parking spaces delineated, you don't have parallel parking spaces or diagonal parking spaces. So we have to come up with a system to be able to establish the location of all these different uses on the street. And one of the key things, we want to make sure that there's multiple functions on the street. So it's active for as many different uses throughout the day and the week as as possible. And these activity zones are a place to be able to have a lot of flexibility around how to be able to encourage a variety of different ways to be able to to use the street. So in thinking about the location for outdoor activity areas or outdoor dining patios, we're looking at the buildings. And the number, there's several, you know, obviously, there's many buildings on both sides of the street. But for each building, what's needed for fire and life safety in terms of emergency access and egress. And so we've created setbacks that are based on where the property lines are for the buildings and then being able to have four foot setbacks at each property line. So that any two buildings come together, you have eight feet in order to be able to allow emergency egress and access to and from the the main access way to these uses. And then, so that's the fundamental part. And then in the diagram, you can see where the frontage zone is pedestrian zone, street furniture and activity zone. And the activity zones can be used, all three of those, frontage, curb side, street furniture activities, all those could be used for outdoor dining. And they can be used for merchandising and retailing. There's a lot of opportunities for business use of public right of way. And those zones for their commercial activity that can help create and enhance the vibrancy of the street. And attract more people to want to spend time there, longer stays for lots of different reasons and to sort of discover things as you're a part of the street. But here you can, this activity zone can be for the farmer's market, outdoor dining, retail merchandise, music events, public art. And I think an important part of the design and layout of the street is to make sure there's enough active activities on spaces to accommodate the farmer's market. We've had several meetings with them, and they really need about eighty or so, eighty five stalls to be able to continue successfully there. They it they've, it's one of the most successful and farmers markets in California has the one of the widest selections of of goods there. So we really want to look at how to encourage that and support that. Next, next slide. So when we look at the street cross section and then we look at setbacks. And we look at that the street's going to be resurfaced, but not having hunger, no longer having parking spaces. We had to look at what kind of system do we need to establish to be able to create the distribution of activities along the street. Allow and support commercial use of the street and also be able to have create spaces for public act, public use. So when you look at the existing street, here's just an example of it. You know, right now, all you really have defining where things are is the emergency access twenty foot, sixteen to twenty foot setback. And then you have outdoor dining basically inhabiting the spaces as each business felt is what they needed. And so we're proposing here is having the access zone, excuse me, and then creating activity furniture pedestrian, furniture pedestrian frontage zones. And looking at each building is what's needed to be able to provide emergency egress and access. And so that starts to divide up what the space is for how the streets organized. And I think this is one of the the most fundamental things. And I think the next thing we want to look at is how do we do markings on the street for pedestrians and bikes? And that's what we're going to look at in the next part of the project with alternatives. But do that in a way to be able to mark out the location for stalls for the farmer's markets. You can have a really well designed and distributed layout of of the street. So this is really reorganizing how the streets allocated. Next slide. So, you know, with based on that, it'd be great to hear feedback on that. The next part that we're doing is we're, the next step is going to be advancing alternatives. And we've done a lot of work on on this already. We're really, I think the most important thing is to see how we're thinking about this framework. We've talked with merchants multiple times about, you know, avoiding the sort of designing a project with lots of input. And then you sort of adds more and more design elements and everybody likes it, but it's so complex and it's so about so many elements to it that could become infeasible. And we said, let's not do that. Let's actually look at what's necessary and a kind of adaptive street environment versus a reimagined street environment. Where we kind of explore improvements and how they're prioritized so that they're not only desirable and feasible, but they're really achievable. And those are things that can be done in short term or near term in order to be able to advance transformation of the street. So we're framed in a sort of, that's the approach, how we want to do it, what's the improvements, what are the costs and what's the benefit? And we've looked at two two alternatives for how to do that and adapt a street, which basically says, okay, if you keep the existing curbs or many of them, not all of them. And you resurface the street and you add bike lanes and planters, how do you modify planting areas? So you can really support outdoor dining, because when you start looking at the street, there's areas that really need some change around that. How do you create flexible public spaces in the farmer's market? And then how do you actually adapt these spaces that are both the farmer's market on Sunday, but when the farmer's market's not there, they're the rest of the week? What elements do you have to make those a vibrant, attractive, functioning public space? So that's that's the goal there. But we also wanted to look at reimagining the street. And the reason why is that, you know, by, but we're we're assuming we're going to be effective with on on a lot of levels. But when you look long term for the 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 street, everyone says you need to have more trees and more nature. But it's just a fundamental desire and wish you're creating a beautiful place. There's a lot on the street that's great. But street trees are pretty small and things like that. So when you do that, you end up stepping into needing doing green stormwater infrastructure. We have bioswales and retention basins and things like that. And you have to really think about creating a green infrastructure environment for the whole street. And that's a much more expensive project to go out to to do that. But we want to look at what that means because it does create certain benefits that you you wouldn't get if you're just adapting the streets. We want to be able to explore what those things are, to see what the trade offs are, to see if there's benefits for that, to see what makes most sense. And that would envision having a continuous pedestrian surface for bike lanes. There were a lot of comments to eliminate curbs if possible, how to create a central multi-use public space. I think having a central place that's dedicated that can have events, can have markets, can have night markets, can have assemblies, can have theater, can have children's events, all kinds of things. Would be a fabulous destination at the heart of Cal Avenue. So how do you create that? And then how to look at public art in a in a in a much more civic way, how you can use it to find space and be a placemaker. And then also looking at the flexible reuse of of spaces that the farmer's market is needing throughout the week. So those are kind of the next steps that we're going to be taking moving forward on this. Next slide, please. So, you know, here's the the game plan moving forward. So, you know, here's the the game plan moving forward because we want to move forward as quickly as we can. You know, we're going to go to PTC to amend the comprehensive plan and the endowment of the EIR. That's February 12th, it's coming right up. Okay, improvements on California Avenue contractors ready to go, their subs are all ready to go. That's going to start on the 18th. We're going to do merchant outreach. We want to really go through this outdoor activation discussion in detail, sort of, you know, establishment by establishment to really work out what's really needed. And how that works. And then in March, coming back to you on the comp plan amendment, EIR, we're looking at the date in March could be the 17th. Trying to work that out in terms of agendas. We're going to do a lot more community engagement on the alternatives. And that's we're really excited about that because we're to talk about places, place making, activation, what people like to see there. And look at it from all different users because we have teens, children, adults, young adults, professionals, seniors. We want to see whatever his perspectives are about multiple ways of being able to use the space. And our near term improvement should be done in March. I'm very excited about that. And then April and June, we'll come back ARB PTC on signage, outdoor activation, alternatives. And then the next step of the El Camino intersection improvements will be underway. And then we'll come back to you about outdoor activation alternatives. So that's my presentation and I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
And I just want to close this out with a reminder that we have a really exciting opportunity here on Calab. There's a lot of work underway, a lot of efforts that are currently in process. Just last week, I spoke with a new innovation hub that cited on Calab and they cited the other citing. Reason for their location there was because of its proximity to Caltrain as well as the car free street. So they have people coming from other countries coming in who are not going to have a car necessarily. They can get off at Calab Caltrain station, they can walk to the hub and then they can enjoy the car free Calab. That's literally why they chose to go there. So I think the question we have here with council tonight and with their staff actions as proposed is, is staff going in the right direction? Does council want to affirm those next steps that we outlined? And do we want to take advantage of this very significant opportunity we have for a car free California Avenue?
Great, thanks to both of you for that staff presentation. Compared to where we were, wow, that's really exciting. Do you have staff could take some questions now before we see if there's any public comment? If council members have specific structural or technical questions, if not, we'll just do the public comment and swing back. Okay, Mayor, let's do public comment.
Michael E.
Hi, my name is Michael Eager, I live in Evergreen Park, near the Cal California Avenue area. About a year and a half ago, we, the Evergreen Park neighborhood associate created a Calab committee. I'm part of that. We wanted to work with the city closely to act as stakeholders, communicate between the city, what the city plans were to the neighborhood. And communicate our views to the city. We had a conversation at the block party in May, which I thought was quite good. We don't feel like we've been involved since then. You've had 10 or more conversations with merchants, you've had one conversation with us. There are some parts of this plan that I think are really good. I like the street layout in general. I like the idea that we have sidewalks where people can walk down them, they're eight foot wide. Rather than the generally four foot wide around the restaurants now. That's good. The part that I don't like is the signage. We were given three different choices in a survey. And while you have one that got more than others, I'll point out that 60% or more didn't like that one. There are three of them. Both all equal. And to my mind, all I voted for the one that I thought was least offensive. I've been on many public, on many pedestrian areas, most recently in Iceland and Reykjavik, a wonderful little city. And their signage, it's unobtrusive. It looks to me like this design is where the signage is what you're advertising rather than the street, rather than the merchants, rather than the environment. So my recommendation would be to relook at the signage, make it less obtrusive. It's not about being upbeat, it's about being a neighborhood market street with shops. And residents and dining and activities. So, thank you.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. We'll come back to the dais now for council members with the. Mission identified for tonight, general direction, okay, or or off base? That's a quick summary. Councilmember Rectal.
Yeah, is transportation online?
I don't think we have anyone from transportation.
I just want to talk more about the bikes. I mean, one of the things that, I mean, this is overall back off first. This, I'm really excited. I'm really excited to get rid of all of those plastic barriers. I'm really excited to to have some that looks more permanent. And so this is, I'm very happy this is coming to us. One area I see is conflicts between bikes and pets. And are there plans for that? Can you speak to that at all?
Yes, definitely. So, yeah, that's a common cop question about that. In developing the alternatives will actually illustrate solutions for how to address that. I think the challenge is how to address the speeds of bicycles. And during that time, not necessarily when there's no pedestrians or when it's very full of people. I mean, either those times it's pretty safe. Because people get off their bikes, but it's that time during the day where there's a few people who are walking and bicyclists and how to how to do that. So we're looking at a bunch of strategies for how to address that. And it's not just signage, but it's looking at the way the bike lanes are configured on the street. Both in terms of how wide they are, the route that they are, whether there's changes in the ground surface or plane. How to identify very clear areas where there's pedestrian crossings and what to do like around planters and things like that to help manage that. So we're in the middle of looking through all that right now.
Okay. I mean, I used to work up in the research park and I'd my bike down to Molly Stones all the time. And this was before it was closed, it was just cars there. And I would, even though Calab is a bike route, I would never use it just because there were so many drivers backing out of the spots that I. It was easier for me to go to come down from the research park and get on Cambridge and take Cambridge to Molly Stones. And that was lightly trafficked, but that's not a bike route. And I really would like to see that upgraded to like a class three bike route with sharos having better stoplight. Infrastructure for bicycles. That would be very good because then anyone who's going either to the train station or even downtown passing through there doesn't have to go through the heart of Calav. And we really can just have the people who are going to a Calab destination use that bike route. Because, you know, bicycles, they're human, they're in the hurry, right? And they have all these distracted pedestrians wandering around and I can see this being frustrating for both sides. And so if we can get those people who are in a hurry and want to just go fast, get them over to Cambridge. So the slow bikers who are doing shopping can use it on Calav, I think could be a really good thing. Okay, thank you.
Councilmembers, Tom.
Give us mayor a few questions. Would the grinding slash repaving of Calav with the regarding the short term improvements remove the the parking blocks?
Uh, yes.
Okay, good.
Because I think several of them have been removed already.
Yeah, but there's still a few there. I almost tripped on one the other night.
Yeah.
Okay, great. What does staff anticipate as far as? Different timing on the long term change the street, whether we pursue the adaptive street or the reimagined street design? Do we have a sense of of how long the two different options might take?
I think that's a good, good question. I think it depends a bit on the scope of what the improvements are. And there are different strategies and the reimagining is really looking at what would a a large project be in terms of all the elements together? But adapting, if we look at how to do prioritized improvements that can happen over time. So part of that's going to be looking at how to implement things as as quickly as possible. And that's really the the goal for how to think through that. We don't have the exact timeline yet, but once we, I think, once we get through that part of the design process and cost, that's maybe one of the better idea.
Okay. And then on the five different zones for the sidewalk and and roadway zones. Where would the where would the tree canopy? Go as in as envisioned in the reimagined street alternative? Because the the model you showed, I didn't really kind of see where that would be.
Yeah, it would be in the street furniture curb zone space.
Okay.
Yeah.
So creating a nice kind of canopy for people who are dining.
Right, right along where the existing drainage really is, the drainage line where the curbs are.
Okay. Yeah, I think I think for me, we're on the, you know, I think we're on the right track. I mean, I think from, I I believe kind of the top two priorities. One, implementing these short term improvements in order to just be able to improve the aesthetics and accessibility of the space. Just be able to make it more welcoming. We've been hearing frustration from merchants for a very long time. I think it's been taking too long. I I don't really understand why it has taken this long, but we're here. So I'm glad that it's that that's moving forward and want to make sure nothing delays that. And then for me, personally, I'm really excited about the reimagined street design possibility. I I understand that the adaptive street is likely going to be a much cheaper, much faster option. But yeah, I think we really need to look ahead 10 years from now and go, what is the type of space? That we want to be able to see and kind of Steve, as you mentioned, how incredible of an opportunity this is. The the opportunity to be able to completely reimagine a community, one of a community's kind of downtown shopping cores. Rarely comes along, so this is really in some ways a once in a generational opportunity for us to be able to redefine this space. And I I think it would be a shame to just go with the adaptive street alternative. Because at that point, I I really don't see much of a change from. What it's likely going to be after these near term improvements. And I don't see that being a huge draw to the surrounding region. I mean, I think if we go with something really incredible. That I know we're we're not there yet at the design phase, but something like that reimagined street. I I see us being able to have something that could that could rival Santana Row within the next 10 years. And really be and really create California Avenue as a destination for shopping and dining for for the entire Bay Area. So I really don't want us to lose that opportunity. Of course, the price and everything is going to is 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 going to have a big impact on that. But we've also been talking a lot about the need to be able to create third space. And I think this is going to be able to to do that. I think especially to be able to create opportunities for young people to be able to have something fun to do in Palo Alto and a cool space to be able to hang out in. Is going to be is going to be really great. I was just, I spoke with a group of Casta Lea students last last week in one of their club meetings. And that was another issue that kind of came up. There's not, there's no real place for young people to be able to hang out. And we've been talking about youth wellbeing and mental health, being able to create something like this. I I think could be a real, could be a real game changer. So and and then kind of in addition to that, I I appreciate the stakeholder engagement identified by staff. Think that needs to continue, of course. I do hope, though, that we can have further engagement with the youth, whether it's through the youth council or or other ways. To be able to get their feedback and to be able to further design this, to see what kind of space that they are going to enjoy. Because I do think those are going to like kind of write those, those natural spaces is going to be where. Where I think they're going to be able to find ways to be able to to just kind of enjoy hanging out. So really excited about this opportunity. Do you agree, I mean, I think I I like the modern optimism that the that's the preferred. I think that's a cool approach. I like that, at least of the of the three identified. I agree, the signage I wasn't too impressed by. I still think we're early, so but continue to work on that. And then I like council member Rectal's thought process there, but I'd like to see alternative designs with regards to the bike lane. And no matter how many signs or anything we put there, it is still going to create a dangerous situation for some. Because there are going to be a lot of distractions, I think, especially if we pursue the reimagined approach. So being able to see those additional alternatives will be important while while still balancing the need to make sure that. That it is accessible by bike, especially with Calav and Stanford Research Park, et cetera. So I think we're on the right approach. I'm excited, thanks for all your work and yeah, glad this is moving forward.
Great, thank you. When I come back, I'm going to say plus one. Good job. Councilmember Lou is up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really excited, this is before us. Like others have said, I really want this to succeed and I think we can really make investments here or get resources to you as needed to make this move faster. I'll just start off with a few questions and may need to come back for a quick question, for quick comments. So can you clarify how the reimagined curb? That you're proposing is different from the current state? We heard a public comment about how the sidewalks would be wider in some places at restaurants, like what are the other key differences?
Yeah, that's a good question. In having a continuous pedestrian environment, it's really like a plaza, it's like a level environment all the way across. So there's no, you know, curbs in that in that environment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I I meant the reorganized space in slide five. Not the reimagined space.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, in in when you, if you think about the adaptive street concept. We're looking at places where you can, where the curbs will stay, because that's just the most efficient way to address that. And then we're looking at places where you can modify the curbs. And that can be, there's some places where you need curbs, like the extensions at El Camino and at Birch Street. You really need to extend the sidewalk out so that cars will see that, that there's really a curve there. So it really looks like the sidewalk extends where the street is. So you need some places where you need curbs. And there's other places like where Zareen's are, we already have it where the street had been raised up flush with the sidewalk already. So you have some conditions like that already. So what we're really looking at is are there places where you can raise the street up or other places where you extend the sidewalk out? And do some combinations of those things in order to be able to create a more attractive functional environment for the street.
Okay, I think actually the question slightly different. So we have our current state. We have slide five in your presentation that. Talks about a reorganized version of our current street.
Yeah.
Also, slide six in five both cover that.
Yeah.
And then we have the adaptive and then the reimagined version. So in the near term, what we're going to look at is the reorganized version, the one that you detailed in slides five and six, right? And so I want to understand what the key differences are in that near term. And the timeline for getting that near term reorganized street that, you know, would not change anything related to curbs presumably.
Right, yeah. Well, I mean, in the the diagram that's on slide five. That does show curbs that are there. But this could apply, you can, this, these zones can apply to whether there's curbs there or not there. So I think that that that's important. So this could have been drawn in in two ways. One with curbs and one without curbs. You'd still have the zones laid out in that in that configuration. Primarily because of just street drainage and what's needed for addressing that. When we do the design work, the the next step of design work for the alternatives. I think it'll be a lot clearer to present and walk you through what those things are.
And I would also just add that there is engagement and outreach needed with the merchants on the street regarding those activation guidelines as well. And so we'd be looking to incorporate their feedback into those activation guidelines as they're brought forward for approval from the council. Okay, so the reorganization, the smaller scale changes where you just kind of reconfigure the width of the sidewalk or the zones for outdoor dining. That will come back before council and that will have some merchant outreach first. And there is no specific timeline for that nor any, of course, there's also no specific timeline for the adaptive or reimagined. Options is, of course, because that's speculative.
Well, we're working, we're going to be, we want, we're going to be doing outreach in March on these alternatives. And so we'll be coming back to council on that, you know, in the second quarter of of 2025. So we've been able to walk you through what that is.
Okay.
But the actual timing for the improvements will be. Yeah.
So just if I might, and hopefully this is helpful for clarification. What Bruce and Steve are describing effectively implement the adaptive approach. And and the adaptive, the basic concept behind it is what you can do within the context of the existing infrastructure that's already there. And so it it's not a separate exercise. infrastructure that's already there. And so it it's not a separate exercise in order to get to implementation of that adaptive street. Does that make sense?
Yes, okay. I think that makes sense and that's also my time. So I'll come back with quick comments in another round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, Mr. Fukujie, Mr. Wugliardo, Urban Field Studios, if you're listening. This feels really good to me. Having seen this develop as a member of the retail committee, I, you know, have a sense of where we've been and this is clearly a milestone where we are today. So hats off. It's thorough and it's exciting. I do want to acknowledge that we've tried our merchants' patience with the pace and the timing. Nobody's fault, just a reality of the times and the circumstances. It took us a long time to get the it's soon coming on February 18th, the planters and bollards to get rid of the orange plastic filled with water and vinyl. We know that that's been hard on folks. And and now we're here and I just I really applaud you. Speaking of that near near term solution, I'm curious as to how you ensure that demand that designs for near term solutions are going to be consistent with designs we haven't yet approved for the long term.
That's a that's a good question. We did the near term improvements, especially the planters, the selection of the planter type, the shape, these sort of matrix from, you know, old town fiberglass. And the color are all consistent with what we've been working on with the signage program. We met with our consultants, we went through and reviewed all that with them. So, yeah.
Great. Well, sticking with signage, contrary to what some others have said, I feel there's much to be excited about. I love the logo and the 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 font, the typeface. I see playfulness. I see artiness. I like the all caps architectural feel with a bit of a personality. I think it's clever and it's different. I love the color palette. I think it very subtly evokes the blue and gold of California without it all being blue and gold, which is important, given that we're Stanford's town. I think it pulls itself off real well. For the El Camino entrance sign, I love the full width one that's up high. Being up high, it extends and also extending the full width of the street. Visually, I think it tells us something is happening here. It tells you the street is closed and that there's a there there. So I really was drawn to that one. Technical question for you on the blade signs. I found myself turning my head 90 degrees and thought, are people really going to do that to read that long California Ave that way? And do you do it? You're nodding yes. Obviously, you think it's yes. You know, I I actually wonder, is it better this way or would people more naturally turn to the right? What do our designers say about that?
When we originally bring it to have it just say Cal Ave, but several merchants said, are you really need to spell out the name of the street, California Avenue? Because it's also for directional finding for people. So in doing a blade sign, because the word California is such a long word, they really thought it'd be turned on its side. That's how that that came about. Some of the original ideas were to have it horizontal, but the typeface gets much smaller in order to do that. So we traded off visibility and size for orientation.
Did you consider a vertical with the letters stacked, C A L I F like that?
I know I don't believe Liz did that, but okay, thank you.
I'd be curious to see it just.
Sure, it's a good idea.
People having to go like this. In terms of just a note on the setback slide, backyard brew was missing and it may be because its setbacks are not relevant because it is literally in the back of other places. But because its vibe really exemplifies the drop in outdoorsy hangout feel of Cal Ave, I just want to be sure it is on the radar as an entity of Urban Fields.
Yes, we'll do that.
Great. Others have already spoken to the adaptive and reimagined. So with my time remaining, I think what I want to do is just signal that as welcome and wonderful as this is, these are components of a much larger set of changes coming to Cal Ave. And as on the retail committee taking from PTC the work on use restrictions, I'm just wondering where we are with those things. There are use restrictions on Cal Ave. There are parking requirements, for instance, you might have a soft retail, soft goods retail store and you want to make it into a restaurant and restaurant requires parking, but we have all this parking with a new garage. What are we doing? We've got conditional use permits on things that maybe that's kind of outdated. How is all that work aligning with this work? Because I know our merchants and people who are trying to rent out those spaces are really eager to know that those changes are coming.
So I'll speak to that. Council took action following up on the retail committee conversation about those land use changes back in, I believe, November of 24. So those are live. When we talked about like the changes to conditional use permit and such, when someone comes into Cal Ave, if it was something that was changed as a result of that, that's live. So if somebody wants to do one of those chain, chain's not even the right word, but one of those sure, formula retail, you know, and they're in that if it was more than 10, they were prohibited previously, but if they're at the 11th location now, they're allowed to proceed without the CUP. So that messaging is, you know, being broadcast out to folks. You know, that is generating some interest in some of those spaces. I think to your point, it becomes a situation where the sum, it's greater than the sum of its parts. And so that's an important piece of it. These near term improvements coming in line is a piece of it. The outdoor activation guidelines become a piece of it. And together you get to this whole that really represents what Cal Ave can be as a car free street.
And I would note that your reference to the parking does relate to the item that's next on your agenda.
Great, thank you. It was great to hear that those changes are live. I presume that that was the case, but I wanted it to be stated. And so thank you for doing that.
Councilmember Robert.
Thank you. So I also am enthused to see this come forward. I on a high level issue of the adaptive street versus the reimagined street, I wanted to respond to the issue that Councilmember Stone raised about that really is what's the what's the purpose or the goal of what we're doing here? And he alluded to an enthusiasm to make this a regional destination, which made me think back on, wait a minute, we've often really historic, well, I shouldn't say historically, for a long while, we've had as the de facto reality and something we embraced, which is that University Avenue has been a regional destination. And California Avenue has been much more of a local destination. Now, it's not a sharp line. We certainly now from our farmer's market, from the music there and the closed street, we're drawing more people from outside Palo Alto to Cal Ave than we probably ever did before. But we really didn't talk about what's the goal here? And in my mind, it's twofold. We've heard from the community how much they value Cal Ave and value it as a place to have activity and as a place to shop. That goes into the other part, which is the goal is to support really the merchants that make Cal Ave much of what it does. How do we work to kind of paddle upstream against the trend of fewer and fewer retail goods being sold? So how do we support those goods retailers? Because we want that mix of food and beverage and goods retailers. So a certain amount of vitality is necessary to do that. But I don't, I'm not interested in turning Cal Ave into principally a regional destination. I'm interested in our focus being to help those retailers thrive and have Cal Ave be the location that our community values and our neighbors value and neighboring communities who come there. So that then moves me to this question on the adaptive street or the reimagined street. If we could get the reimagined street in a reasonable timeframe at a reasonable cost and figure out how we pay for it, I'm for the reimagined street. But I'm skeptical about that. And we we get tempted to say, whiteboard, what would we love? And dang right, I'd love it to be something like that. But if the choice ends up being push this out indefinitely and maybe who knows whether it could happen versus getting something that's a very good improvement and making that happen and making it happen in a reasonable timeframe, then I'm I'm for the the adaptive. I think about like the University Avenue Intermodal Center that we now are working on. There have been either four or five different efforts of which Bruce has been involved with, I think, two of them that have done extensive reimagining and planning for that station area. And none of them ever happened because they were really too big of a bite. So I want to, that's part of what's I'm thinking about there. And so with the with the phased implementation of the adaptive, I'm going to be, we we really, I guess the other part, I I should take a step back. The other part on which way to, what we prefer is we really don't yet have an estimate of the cost or the timeframe or the sources of the funding for for those two options. And certainly, I think we all assume the adaptive is cheaper and quicker and more probably more doable on the sources of funding. And then, let's see. I have a number of smaller issues and thoughts that I'll I'll hold for a follow up. But I did want to present one thing in terms of kind of the branding. We were California Avenue or Cal Ave. This is Mayfield, historic Mayfield, a town that has a great history, not much in the way of those buildings remaining, if anything. But predates Palo Alto by 30 years, was an independent city after it was finally annexed during prohibition when prohibition put out business, some of their major industries there. It was called South Palo Alto, actually, for after it was incorporated or annexed within the city. But it has a real historic identity. I don't know whether that is something that would be really embraced, but I'd like to see that question asked. Intuitively for me, I think it has more appeal. It has a greater identity than Cal Ave or California Ave. And I'll wait on the rest.
Councilmember Rinker.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Fukujie. That presentation was was a very good and the the report, the staff report was tremendously thoughtful and helpful. So I think the work that went into that, which was clearly substantial, is really helping our discussion tonight. I'll start with the design alternatives. Yes, I think most of us would probably prefer the reimagined if we can pull it off. I I guess I have a view somewhat in between my colleagues, Stone and Burt, in the sense that I would love to see Cal Ave and University Ave polished up and brought back to a circumstance where even if one is more regional and one is more local, between the two, Palo Alto is a destination. This is the place they want to come. They're gonna maybe one night they want something that's local on Cal Ave, the other time they're, it's the more international flair or whatever of University Avenue. But I do think if we can make it such that if people drive to Palo Alto and their favorite restaurant on the University Avenue downtown area is overflowing, they go to Cal Ave because it's cool too. So this is an exciting opportunity and nice to see us hit this degree of preparation. And obviously, the devil's in the detail in terms of the cost and and the timing of all of that as we as these plans evolve. But if we could do it, I do like the green canopy, et cetera, of the reimagined. I have a couple of questions. One is, I was intrigued by the chart. It was actually a table, I guess, table one on page 6161, where it had the areas of agreement, the areas of divergence after speaking with community members and merchants. And and first, I took note of the public comment that made it sound like perhaps the community member conversation hasn't been evolved as much. And I'd be really, really interested in seeing that pursued so that we have sort of the same depth of responses from both entities. But I was kind of intrigued by the areas of divergence and wonder if you have some thoughts about this because a couple of times it almost felt like al- almost like a a false divergence in the sense that what I really heard from the residents comments portrayed here were that they want it to be beautiful. I mean, overall, and what you hear from the merchants is they want it to be functional. I mean, I'm I'm oversimplifying, but those are kind of through lines. And I don't, you know, some of the things that the specifics on that I don't really see as an or but an and. And let me give you a couple of examples. So public seating. Says a community prefers playful slash sculptural and merchants focus on functionality and theft prevention. Why can't it be both? Outdoor dining, talking about a community prefers unique business specific designs and merchants favor pre-approved, cost-effective designs. Well, could we not have pre-approved, cost-effective designs? And if a merchant wants to go beyond that to do something, you know, unique, we could let, anyway, I just wanted to get your sort of thoughts on my thoughts.
Yeah, so I'll take a crack and I'm happy to invite Bruce to participate as well. I think one of the things we see is the real tension from merchants who have their correct vision that they want to see it succeed as a commercial destination, as a commercial district with some of the other perceptions that, you know, we want it to be open space that's available to us. One example of the the seating that you mentioned, there's public art right now out in front of Son of Wolf and it's, you know, very playful. It's a little metal sculpture with some seats and a table. It is not functional for a restaurant to have seating there. And so that doesn't work. And so like that type of tension, as you talk about playful seating versus practical seating, I think is what weighs in merchants' minds, is they want something that their customers are going to be able to participate and sit in.
Can you explain that? Because I've sat there and it's functional as public seating. It's not functional as restaurant seating, but nor would it be if it was not playful. I mean, I I'm I'm confused.
Yeah, so I think that's the tension is if that public art wasn't there in that exact space, if you think about like what you see want to do there, if you want public art.
That's a use, excuse me, sorry to interrupt you. So I can see that there would be use conversations about, should we have a bench here that can't be used for whatever function? But what it looks like, like, like if we find a place where we agree, we can have a permanent bench here that doesn't use be used for restaurant, it can still be playful, can it not? And yeah.
Yeah, thank you for elaborating so we could get to the heart of your question. I think that's just the the frames they were bringing to it. So restaurants are thinking of the spaces when they're asked the question, they're thinking of the seating like in front of them. That's kind of where they're responding from. And when the public's responding, they're, I think, responding where you're going, which is if we all agree in this public space, we want this type of thing, can that be the use there?
Okay.
Happy to let Bruce jump into, and I know we're at time, but I think we can finish this.
I just, it's it's sort of like who's in whose business is kind of the issue. I think that for for merchants, having the community tell them what kind of seating they should have, they were a little uncomfortable about that because it's really their seating for their business. So I think there were some questions like what what is it really, what is it really covering? But I I think that the big point is that there's a lot, I think there's slightly different value sets in terms of how people think about it. There's really a need on California Avenue for there to be free public seating. There is seating out there, but there's not very much of it. And so I think that when people are thinking about public seating, they're thinking about what would be a great public space seating for them. Is it benches? Is it colorful? Is it for kids? Is it stacked? Is it?
Yes.
Whatever. And I think that for merchants, you know, just it's really about support for their commercial activity. And so they really want to have the quality of those improvements. They want those to make sure that they're really high and that they can be well maintained and that they reflect well on their business if it's going to be next to them. So I think those are sort of like the different sort of points of view broadly. But I would say in general, I think that people would love to see more seating because more people spend more time there, you know.
Yeah, and I was thinking more broadly than restaurants, but merchants, because that's what was referenced here. I have a bunch more questions and comments, so I can wait for the next round if you'd like.
Yeah, let's do that. Remember, we're supposed to be giving big picture and directions here and I just want to make a couple of comments. One, you know, you're using the words retail vibrancy and I think that's what we're now using in our in our objectives as of last Saturday. And I think that's great. I presume from our point of view, as both city, we're talking about restaurants and retailers, or in general merchants. But I felt a little, when we discussed the University Avenue a couple of weeks ago, there was a little bit of we they. You know, restaurateurs versus retail. And I said at the time, and I I think it's one feeds the other. You come to a restaurant and you stay and you buy something. Could you tell me what right now, what you feel like the heartbeat is of our merchants in that regard? And in the regard to what they're seeing here? You know, they're impatient, as I have been. So I understand that, but what's the tone right now?
I think there's a general understanding that retail vibrancy is a broad term that supports both restaurants and goods retailers. I will say, as anyone who's been to Cal Ave recently will know, there's far more restaurants on the car-free street portion than there are hard goods retailers. Even some of the retailers, yeah, it's no small preponderance. And so I think that's part of what we're trying to get at with kind of the outdoor activation guidelines as well, is making sure that we're setting it up for a way that it's able to take advantage of that car-free street. And should a retailer design or decide to locate their goods out in that space, they'd be able to do so in a way that helps entice customers into the store. One of the things about a commercial district, even one, especially one focused on serving the community and the neighborhood, is you want to have those things beyond just restaurants, beyond just coffee shops there. And so legacy institutions like the Coblery that have been there for decades. And we certainly want them to stick around for as long as they're willing to. But we need to be making sure we're making investments in the space that support their kind of business as well as restaurants.
Okay. Also, just want to appreciate, say, I appreciate Councilmember Burt's sobering us up here a little bit, not knowing how much this grand scheme is going to cost. So we obviously would like to get some general feeling of that to be in our in our next round. But I'm really glad that you're taking a systemic approach, even if we rule out three quarters of it, because we need to see all that. So we know what we're passing up for what price point. So when you talk about reorganizing the street, that's a great concept that, you know, you're not just gonna see what you can squeeze in here. It's very strategic, and I think that's that's quite important. Okay, so let's stay big picture. And I think the next next one up is Mr. Rektal.
Yeah, so looking at slide eight, I really love the reimagined street. It just, I love getting rid of the curbs and just having a broad plaza that seems very inviting. I love the large trees. I think it'd be really attractive. I am worried that can, you know, can we make, can we get there? The adaptive street is probably more practical. We can evolve to it. But can we evolve to the reimagined street? Is there a way, is there a route that we can take from status quo to the reimagined street without having to do a lot of wasted work?
Well, I think we're going to be really looking at how to do that. That's our next happen to do that.
And is it either or? Or can we, if we go down the route for adaptive street, can we evolve from, once we get that, evolve into the reimagined? Or do we have to make a bifurcation point where we have to choose one or the other?
No, I I think that's an important intention to set. And thinking about how to do the design work is to look at ways to be able to evolve, to be able to do a reimagined street. There's certain benchmarks that the city has, like the 10,000 square feet of area that if that changes, then that triggers stormwater prevention programs or things like that. We have to kind of look at that kind of kick in sort of larger scale sets of improvements. So we'll talk about those details at that time.
Okay. The other thing, when I talk to people, just in general, in public, I always get an earful about Cal Ave. You know, what the hell is taking so long? And so is there anything we can do to speed this up? Is it a budget issue? Is it a manpower issue? Is there a guidance that we can give you to speed it up?
I'll take a crack and then Bruce can jump in. The short of it is affirmation from y'all tonight that we're going in the right direction is powerful and helps keep staff focused on those next steps that we've outlined. I also think that shovels in the ground later this month are really going to do a lot for the community to see what's happening. There is already construction that was taking place at the intersection of El Camino and Cal Ave as part of the El Camino Real Parking and Bike Ways project from Caltrans. But this will really show the improvements happening on Cal Ave itself. And so shifting from those orange water barriers covered in vinyl to those planters with vegetation in them, I think all of those things, the visual indicators that people want to see to show that the city is investing in this space. Reese, if you want to add anything, feel free.
I think that's that's good. I think that the council action for the permanent closure of the street will go a long way to advancing confidence that this is the direction the city is committed to going in.
So if you look at your GAN chart, is there anything that we can be moving up and doing in parallel?
We're we're sequencing everything pretty tightly, following the planned bringing forward of the CEQA amendment to council and CEQA approval to council. So that is really the gating item. That is the legislative action that has to be taken to formally close the street. And then after that, a whole series of things can follow.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rinker.
Yes, and I have three questions. I'll try to keep it tight. And the first one, I bravely ask because I think you're gonna shake your head a little bit. And that is following up on a council member Rektal's questions about bike lanes. So, you know, I'm very curious to hear in future meetings, the thoughts on the interaction between pets and bikes and how we'll do that with the slow bikes and stuff. My question is, we talked about going up and down Cambridge. There are alleys behind the buildings on each side of Cal Ave. And I know it would corrupt the current circulation patterns and it might be a nonstarter. But could there be bike lanes there where it's literally like Jack, what is it? Jacaranda is one of them. So anyway, just curious whether that's something we could even that's even worth exploring.
So I think we could explore it beyond the very preliminary stages. But the the reason it hasn't been explored thoroughly yet is those back of house alleyways are really where a lot of delivery ways deliveries occur. Those are like completely tight when you think of the trucks going through there, when you think of greenways going through there. I think as we talk about circulation elements for cyclists, we really want to look at other routes that aren't right next to those uses as well.
Okay, because it'd be nice if it worked. Okay, thank you. Second comment slash question is on the three designs. I mean, you're never going to get full consensus on those. But I'm a little bit of a dissenter on the modern opt, I'm less optimistic about the optimism. But and it sounds like we may want a little more community input on that from the public comment. But I have a question because they sort of are keying off of or teeing off from those terrazzo sidewalks. Are those staying, the sidewalks? Or is that just a nod to what we have now?
And when we look at the street designs, we'll know more about what will stay in terms of terrazzo sidewalks.
Okay. Because I actually kind of like the modern one, but I agree with the comments about the orange. It does look a little Halloweeny. But when I, so I don't know if there's a different color that could be used in that. Because those poppies actually remind me of that one photo of that near the bank that's put with the modern optimism group. But it's very reminiscent of that. So just a thought. Then lastly, oh, toward the very end of the staff report, it mentioned that in the longer term, well, first of all, there's a discussion of the outdoor activation guidelines that will be forthcoming. And said in the longer term that those may be best administered by a business association as a common area partnership. And it's obviously a little premature to get, I mean, that that is down the road. But have we gotten any feedback from the business community about the potential of business association there?
We have. You know, we've been convening a meeting that was taking place pretty much monthly during 2024, trying to convene some sort of Cal Ave, Merchants of Cal Ave Association type meeting. I think one of the things that we saw through that was the relationship could only move at the speed of trust. I think the frustrations that each of you had shared from the dais from those merchants is something we heard time again in those meetings. And, you know, we reassured them, we were doing what we could to be moving forward. Again, I think when there's shovels in the ground and that construction actually starts, that's going to do a lot to help there. Candidly, as mentioned in the staff report, and as experienced by council in November twenty three, when the direction was given to staff to pursue these improvements, you know, there was an online petition that circulated that was signed by a number of businesses on the street that were really focused on the issue of circulation and access. And, you know, could we reopen one lane type thing? And I think these improvements and the efforts that are outlined here in these next steps are going to do a lot to improve the conditions on the street and hopefully continue to attract customers and patrons to those businesses, which will hopefully get them willing to organize and invest themselves.
Okay, so that may best be administered as sort of a marker to explore that as the project unfolds to see if that's something we can do. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burt.
Thank you. So a few other things. On the signage, a member of the public said that 60% didn't like this version. I don't think that's actually what the survey showed. It's 60% picked one of the other two versions as their highest priority. I looked at them and and there are at least two that I would say I liked one more than another. But that's not the same as not liking this one. And then I did want to raise a few specific issues. One of the biggest is that as my colleagues have talked about, you know, how do we show that real progress? One of the strongest indicators of lack of progress is that we're still stuck with tents rather than parklets. And we're now five years after the closure almost. And we still have not had before the council the opportunity to implement the permanent parklet program there. And this council, I think, a year and a half ago, had indicated enthusiasm on going forward with something there. My understanding was that in the fall, this was going to come to us so that council could give direction on permanent parklets. And then we got it put off until now in February, and that's not part of the decision we're being asked to make here. And so I'd be what I would like to see is whether my colleagues agree that we want to get back to this council on an action item to give direction on that initiative so that we don't go through another winter of tents. The public doesn't like them. The the traditional merchants don't like them. The food and beverage merchants don't like them. So I think that's pretty unanimous. And yet we're still stuck with them. And we have permanent parklet design. My understanding was that one of the reasons for holding off is wanting to make sure that these alternatives that we're reviewing tonight didn't make that somebody put in a permanent parklet and then they had to redo it because we were reconfiguring the street. If we're past that point, we need to get to this next action. I did want to also note on trees, whether we have additional trees or not. When back after we had the clear cutting of trees in late 2009, we we actually had two different tree planting to replace those. And then when we did the sidewalk expansion, went from four lanes to two lanes, we did another group of trees. And at the tail end of that, what what became obvious on the first group is we we replaced a lot of non-desiduous trees with this all deciduous trees in the first planting. And then I was able to raise a concern and we got a sprinkling of non-desiduous. So what do we have is seven months out of the year, we have a great growing canopy. It's not yet a great canopy, but improving canopy every year. Five months out of the year, it's barren largely. So we need to have a greater mix of non-desiduous trees. They may take longer to mature, but I don't want to see five months a year where we have a lot of buildings. What what the clear cutting showed was Cal Ave was working for the community despite the physical appearance of those buildings, not because of it. We 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 expose the appearance of those buildings from that clear cutting. And then on the access zone, I'm really interested in what measures we're going to take to prevent bike speeding there if we allow bikes. And, you know, there are several different measures that can be taken. We don't want to get into stipulating them tonight. But between signage and vertical or horizontal measures, we need to really make sure this is understood as a slow bike area. If you want to pass, go past California Avenue, not through it. As Councilmember Rektal said, let's improve Cambridge with Sheroes and and intersection bike improvements, which really don't exist on Cambridge. And I agree, should be part of this greater plan is to improve Cambridge. And then the other question on the access zone is we currently have in this design to have pedestrian walkways on either side of the bike walkway. And there's, there's a trade off there. And that goes back to these two different audiences that we are trying to serve. The community likes to walk down the street. There's not only a a greater hazard risk when we put bikes next to the to the walkway, but maybe that can be managed. But one of the things that merchants complained about was everybody's walking down the middle of the street and they don't walk in front of my good store anymore. And sidewalks bring pedestrians in front of those stores. We've argued that, well, look, we've brought more pedestrians down there. It's a more vibrant street in many ways than it was. But if they're not passing in in front of those retailers, then they're not getting that benefit. I don't know what's the right balance there, but I want to make sure that consideration is there. And then one of the things that I thought was going to come forward in these this phase of measures, we've heard from a number of goods merchants in particular that now that they don't have parking in front of their stores, customers who come to pick up goods or deliver goods or whatever really need to do so through the alleys. We've had the 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 wine store there who I, my understanding is before COVID, they had short-term parking behind. And we actually took it away at the same time that they lost the parking in front of their store. That isn't rocket science to get that near-term parking for for pickup and delivery of goods and short-term customers going in as well as even ADA needs that we heard was an issue when we closed the street. So I, that's one that I had expected would be part of this package. I'm disappointed it isn't. I think we need to have a greater sense of urgency on that. And even if it's not a perfect solution, peel off the low hanging fruit and get that done right away. And then we'll refine it over time. Thanks.
Councilmember Lou. I'll echo a bunch of points that have already been made. So I support bike improvements on Cambridge. And I agree that slowing bike traffic on Cal Ave is really important. I think what you really want to target are the worst of the worst offenders, the people who disregard no biking signs or disregard common sense and speed limits and things like that. And the median bicyclist that bikes very slowly or just rolls into bike parking from their destination is not the problem so much, but that we should really be trying to design for the actual safety risk of the worst or most aggressive cyclists. I agree that we should work on a part permanent parklet ordinance. I think there is, of course, uncertainty around repaving the street or aesthetics or things like that. But there is really no clear timeline, otherwise it seems to make these larger street changes. I support the reimagined proposal. I would echo member echo Councilmember Rektal's point that we want to be able to evolve and get to that reimagined state. I worry that our adaptive plans could look temporary or draw some of the same kind of complaints that we already see if we don't execute really well on planters or kind of guardrails for potential biking corridors or things like that. And I think there are a lot of things in the reimagined proposal that can be based in. I mean, trivially, art, for example, public art could be based in. And if in the adaptive approach, we would do some repaving or just in general, we need to do some repaving anyways, potentially there's some opportunities to put in a few new tree wells. If not, do a totally level curb or a big stormwater upgrade or things like that. I'll also comment a little bit on the overall aesthetic. So from the poll in attachment B, the public direction was to focus aesthetics more toward contemporary over mid-century. I think that was a overwhelming vote. And so I think we can do mid-century well, but I think we also need to make sure that the materials will actually age gracefully. I don't love the terrazzo. I think the fact that most of the terrazzo will be painted on or printed on signs could make it not age well. I worry some of the aesthetic is a little bit too kind of goofy or a little bit too kind of Las Vegas mid-century when I would prefer an aesthetic that is a little bit more contemporary, like in Eichler or Sea Ranch or Neutra, like kind of mid-century aesthetic. I think that might be a little bit more aligned with what I think that might be a little bit more, uh, aligned with what some of the public comment you referenced about the contemporary versus mid century, uh, might be referring to. Um, but I'll just express that, uh, uh, preference. And, um, on the gateway sign, I, uh, fully support a full width sign. I think there are lots of opportunities to hang banners, um, or do other sorts of programming in a sign like that. Personally, I like the, uh, the signage option where the letters are hung essentially. Uh, that reminds me of the Venice sign, which actually in Los Angeles, which actually has a lot of interesting programming associated with it, where they modify the sign for holidays and things like that. So I'd prefer that option, and those are my comments.
Councilmember Liffett-Hames.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my question is only regarding, um, the cycling lanes down the center. Whether we go with adaptive or reimagine, I'm just having a hard time imagining how this works with the farmer's market. And, um, it may be that I'm just not a visual thinker in that sense, but can you just give me a sense of on a Sunday, um, how the bike lanes are going to work with a whole crowd of people shopping in a farmer's market?
So I'll, I'll take a crack at that. And the, the short answer is they don't work as bike lanes any longer. Um, and so, you know, that becomes full of patrons of the farmer's market, walking through, visiting the stalls and stuff. That space is clear of stalls. You'd still want it for emergency access if an emergency vehicle needed to go down for any reason. But it's just filled with so many people, it's not practical to ride a bike through there. We see something similar on third Thursdays when the crowd is in full swing. The cyclists who are riding through at the start of a third Thursday event, look at the crowd, get off their bike and walk through as the music's playing later on in the night. And so it's a little bit of a self correcting mechanism when there's so many folks there, the cyclist dismount. But the issue that Reese alluded to earlier is those edge cases where you do have a mix of pedestrians and cyclists. And then how do we deal with the more reckless cyclists in those cases?
That's helpful. Thank you.
I want to give staff the opportunity to respond to, uh, maybe substantially, because from our birth comments of should we schedule a time to come back and look at tent removal and things like that? Because, you know, appropriately, the natives are restless and we can't wait more years. So.
So as outlined in the next steps of the PowerPoint slide, we do anticipate returning to council in Q2 to talk about those outdoor activation guidelines. Those outdoor activation guidelines are what serve as the equivalent of a parklet program for Calav. That's where we'd be laying out the structures, the frameworks and how people can be setting up, not only for retail uses, but also for restaurants. So that, that is the thought. We agree wholeheartedly that we do not need to go another winter with the interim conditions and we anticipate returning to council later this fiscal year on that topic.
Bruce, why don't you speak to the train?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think that, um, what's important is that because Calav is a car free street, you know, it's very different than where you have parklets like on University Avenue, for example. You don't, you don't have to protect the space for vehicles. So it completely changes what's really needed. So it's not really a parklet program that would be for Cal Avenue. It's more of an outdoor activation program where you're looking at what the requirements would be for an encroachment permit for a business to be able to occupy the sidewalk or the street for being able to outdoor dining. So it's a little bit different as a program. Um, and the vision's a little different too, which I think is, is very exciting in that it's, it's not so much allowing individual structures to be built along the street, but it's really looking at how do you create, um, you know, release of awning and, uh, large scale umbrellas. There's some really beautiful large format types of structures that could be done. And then also have like screens for being able to handle the weather. So you create an environment that can adapt to what the weather is. That's a lower cost and easier to implement for businesses. So that's actually what we're looking at as a, as a way to do that. I think that'll be much more appealing and allow the special qualities of what make Cal Avenue is a car free street to really come to life.
Yeah, that's what, what I was going to say. There is a difference there because it's closed street. The similarities are wind, rain and cold. So that's, you know, and, and a set, and aesthetics.
Right.
You know, an ugly flapping tent is not pretty to, you know, go into or even listen to while you're trying to eat there. So.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. It's not about permitting more tents. It's about creating a better quality.
Yeah.
Set of investments.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? I think you're hearing that, you know, general high endorsement and enthusiasm and, you know, let's get it done next week. Right? All right. Thanks very much. Okay, that concludes item number, um, seven. And we postponed our break, so we're going to take that now for about 15 minutes. So we're going to come back about five till eight. All right. Thank you.
All right, we're back. We're moving to agenda item eight, which is adoption of an ordinance amending call out to municipal code eighteen and twenty-one, clarifying existing regulations to implement housing laws. And Director Late will have a staff presentation.
Great, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. Yep, okay, so, yes, the the item before you this evening is an ordinance that seeks to implement a number of state laws that were enacted in two thousand and twenty-three or earlier. And there are some minor administrative code cleanup associated with it. That's not related to the housing, but just taking this opportunity to improve the readability of the code. The Planning and Transportation Commission reviewed the ordinance that's before you in May. They, it was supported. There were a couple of recommendations for the council to consider that we discussed at the last time the council considered this about policy decisions on how to address accessible parking on on streets or other public property and investigating the desirability of requiring at least a certain number of electric vehicle parking stations as a part of implementation of AB two thousand and ninety-seven. The city council considered this, a version of this ordinance on November twelfth. The motion summarized is on the screen. In essence, the council supported the the ordinance, but did and also supported a map that staff presented depicting the applicability of of AB two thousand and ninety-seven in Palo Alto and gave direction to staff to require accessible and electric vehicle parking as based on the standard that would have applied on eight, had eighty-two thousand and ninety-seven up in enacted. I'll come back to that and dive into that a little bit more as we go on. And then in late last year, this item was back on the the city's council's consent calendar. It was another first reading, a reintroduction, because the staff had to make some policy decisions. And council hadn't a chance to weigh in on that, so we wanted to reintroduce the ordinance. It was at that time that the council, some council members voted to have it pulled from the agenda, and that's why we have the item before you today. So as noted, there are six housing laws that this ordinance addresses. I'm not going to get into the laws other than just to show this slide here, which briefly summarizes the intent. The council did discuss these laws already. There was not any concerns or objective objections noted, and there were no changes to the ordinances required, with the exception of AB two thousand and ninety-seven, which is where we'll spend the balance of this presentation. If we can get the next slide. So AB two thousand and ninety-seven again is a law that exempts required parking spaces for all uses except for hotels within one-half of a mile of major transit stop. And you can see the image to the right on the screen roughly shows the three transit stop locations, and the shaded portions would be the half-mile radius. The ordinance does include a requirement for a transportation demand management plan for any project or property owner seeking to take advantage of AB two thousand and ninety-seven. The ordinance that's also before you tonight includes the language that the city council provided from November that requires accessible and electric vehicle parking. A percentage of those parking spaces be provided based on what the total parking requirement would have been prior to the enactment of AB two thousand and ninety-seven. Next slide, please. And and so really, this is the the core issue, I think, with respect to AB two thousand and ninety-seven is whether to and and how much accessible and electric vehicle parking ought to apply. And the relevant state law is excerpted in the top of this this slide. And from staff's perspective, there are two reasonable ways to interpret, or there are two two ways to interpret this. The original staff recommendation was and practice had been to require ADA and electric vehicle parking spaces based on the amount of parking that was provided by the developer. This is the voluntary parking spaces that would have been provided because they would have been exempt under AB two thousand and ninety-seven. The other approach, as the council directed, was to, and as there's some language in state law related to this, direct staff to prepare ordinance language that looks again at the totality of the required parking that would have been required, and then take the percentage of ADA and electric vehicle from that standard, which basically means for every development that would seek to take advantage of AB two thousand and ninety-seven would likely need to provide some form of parking on site under that, under item number two, and more of that parking than would have been under item one. Next slide, please. So in preparation for this work and going back into last year, staff had conducted some surveys of other cities, and there's a few other cities that we've recently reached out to, but we haven't heard back in time for for this meeting, just to understand where other jurisdictions were relative to their implementation of state law. And as shown here, at least with these cities, it's their approach is consistent with what the original staff recommendation was, and and none of these cities had identified an alternative path for implementation. Next slide, please. So just a little more context is into why staff supported the original recommendation is, you know, actually. Can we go back maybe a slide? Thank you. This is the some of the ideas that went into supporting the staff recommendation were just recognizing that parking is a is a big driver in how a project has design and and the site conditions help dictate part of what can get built as well as the feasibility of the project that ultimately does get built. And we know, notwithstanding AB two thousand and ninety-seven, that many developers still prefer to provide parking, even though they would not be required to for for other parking spaces on site. And we saw this a couple of weeks ago when the city council was discussing lot T, where the two nonprofit home builders, one of the options that they were considering was a development with no parking on site. Neither one of them found out a preferable design solution and actually favored a design that did have parking on site, even though that this is within that radius, but also recognizing that this that's city-owned land and may have another sort of component to it. Implementation of the original recommendation from staff would allow for a greater interchangeability of land uses, particularly on California Avenue, which has been limited in the change of uses. And as we've seen from the pandemic, there is this shift for more service-oriented uses and typically restaurants or food serving uses, which tend to have a higher parking demand than a retail store. And so for many years, California Avenue did not see a lot of change from one retail use to a restaurant use because that triggered the parking requirement, and many of these sites are built from property line to property line and would not be able to provide that additional parking. With the staff recommended solution, those changes would be allowed to be more interchangeable and not require additional parking. It may also create opportunities for redevelopment on California Avenue, which that too is a policy decision for council to to consider. And then just to note that even if ADA and electric vehicle parking spaces are provided as a part of a private development application on site, those aren't spaces that are available to the public to use. It would be available to people who are visiting the site, who live on the property or who are workers there. That would be the the population that would be allowed to use it and only be allowed to use it if they met the accessibility requirements or had an electric vehicle to to charge. Would they be able to park in those spaces? And then finally, it was based on a recognition that the city does have a distributed parking inventory in off-street parking lots and also on the street grid, both in California Avenue and and university, and that if the council were interested in wanting to advance some public policy decisions for these types of parking spaces, there may be some resources there to do so. Next slide, please. However, there is an interest in wanting to make sure that private development isn't extending its impacts or externalizing those impacts onto the public right-of-way. And so recognizing that there is this need to balance it, there are just some challenges in in its application. And so some of the notes on this slide highlight that the, you know, the more that we dive into this issue, the more complex it becomes. And just noting that our existing requirements for accessible, this is from the state, but also as modified by the local ordinance in the Green Building Code, is very complex in terms of establishing requirements, not just Is very complex in terms of establishing requirements, not just readiness, but installation of electrification. Lot sizes have a lot to do with what can and will ultimately get built on a site. A lot mentions the area and access to public roadways. The design of a structure and the number of parking spaces provided, the path of travel that's necessary to go for accessible parking spaces to the front door. The layout, understanding the the ramp. Requirements for slope and drive aisles and vertical clearance. These are all things that are add to the complication. Our own zoning regulations have covered parking in the downtown area count as as gross floor area, which takes away some of the buildable potential of site that might be seeking to be redeveloped. And we did mention in November that in new parking spaces may have some avenue here to provide relief for spaces that were provided on site, but just noting that our in the parking standards don't apply to residential uses at present. And only apply at least for the most of of 2025 to the ground floor space, commercial space only. And then just noting before the policy considerations about California Avenue changes in land use and in the city's interest in housing production. Next slide, please. So no real easy answers, but just sort of framing some of the challenges that you'll wrestle through in your deliberation. The recommendation for the council this evening is to either adopt the ordinance or or suggest some modifications. Based on your your deliberation and public input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was very pretty helpful in pointing out the complexities and the difficulties. It was really helpful. I'm sure we're going to have some questions here in this first round, so if we could kind of leave it to start to start with that. Anybody want to start? Mr. Richter.
So on slide six, you talk about in lieu fees. I'm not sure if you want to bring it up. Under what condition can in lieu fees, let's talk about downtown, keep it simple. Can in lieu fees be used to pay for parking?
So in lieu fees only apply downtown in the downtown parking assessment district area. And there are some findings that need to be made, but generally, yes, if a commercial use is seeking to pay for in the parking, then that that would be available to them.
Okay, and so only only on the ground floor, but not residential at all.
It's not provided for residential at this time.
Okay, we'd have to change the policy for that.
Yeah.
And that in lieu pays for a certain amount and then that goes to the city or goes to? Who gets that money?
It it goes into the city's in the parking fund. And the city has to identify how we're going to use that money and and have to commit to spending it within certain periods of time. On parking, yes.
Okay, and if a private builder wanted to build extra parking, could they get some in lieu fees to provide they? For example, if only they had 10 extra parking spots, could they sell those to the city effectively?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So if a private development had excess parking. Would they be able to sell that parking or make that parking available? And in return, get some of the in lieu fees? Or can only the city be the only person who constructs the in lieu parking spots?
Well, I'll maybe. If I don't answer this question correctly, the city attorney's office will will weigh in, but I'll on the first part of your question. The where there are excess parking spaces available downtown. Private property owners can engage in a shared parking agreement or offsite parking. And we have seen that and that has happened. And usually there's some, you know, probably financial agreement between those those two entities. In terms of the city and our interest in providing additional public parking. We could enter into a partnership with a builder and use, I believe, a portion of our our in the parking funds to help support that, but that would be subject to a regulatory scheme that we would have to engage in with with our partner.
Okay, and so then if you had a shared parking situation where one one building was building some excess parking and the other one was using it, you still would have the same EVSE and same ADA requirements. Regardless of where you were housing those parking spots. Right? That makes sense?
So if there was a if I needed a certain number of parking spaces. And I had none and was maybe building none under this scenario, but there was another place that did have parking available. Well, it's hard to imagine this because, you know, state law would not require parking. So there's standard parking under AB 2097 cannot be required. That that's not a interpretive issue. So if somebody were trying to build something, they would not have to provide regular parking spaces where the question I think where we get into is the accessibility and the electric vehicle parking piece of it.
Yeah. I'll give me ponder some more. I'll move on.
Councilmember Lou. Continuing on in Lufy's, what would an in lieu program specifically look like for accessible and EVSE spaces?
It's only commercial, though.
Sorry?
It's only commercial, it's not for housing.
Yes, I I guess I'm kind of extending council member rectal's thoughts of let's say we wanted to expand our in lieu program, have a cover downtown and Cal lab, have a cover all types of use. We would be then charging an in lieu fee specifically for accessible and EVSE parking. And so what would that end up looking like in practice? Would that mean that the garage we end up building, maybe a few years down the line, has an extra number of EVSE and accessible spaces and we would otherwise allocate? Would the in lieu fees potentially be significantly higher under the logic that a disabled or accessible space requires more room than a normal space? Do we have any thoughts of what expanding an in lieu program could potentially look like? Or is that something that you just have to come back on if we provide direction?
Yeah, so as I think we noted in November, that is something that we would need to study further. I think there's a couple of different ways that that could take place. One, you know, it it could be the full, you know, replacement cost of a parking, at least as it's calculated now, which I think is in the neighborhood of $140,000 per space. I'll have to maybe double check that, but I think that's the right number. And or it could be something far less than that where we're charging for the installation of electrification equipment on existing public rights of way or within our existing parking structure. You know, there'd be, of course, you know, trenching and labor and those types of costs, but it'd be far less than the 140 if we wanted to consider different tiers. There's probably a multitude of other ways, but we would, we don't have an, I don't have an answer for you tonight on that.
Thank you. And I would definitely prefer to have some option that where in the fees could be specifically affordable for these cases. And yes, I think it is 135,000 I looked earlier. So what's the interplay with our housing element and any risks or commitments we've made there? I think our housing element has referenced AB 2097 a couple of times and reference that it would you know, address the issue of parking minimums through AB 2097. I don't know if in the housing element, we were actually explicit about what interpretation we would present to the state. Is there any comment on housing element or housing element risk?
So I could pull up the housing element and just refresh my you know, recollection on any specific programs that we had relative to it, but again, and and I'll invite the city attorney's office to to weigh in on this too, but the we're not, this isn't local policy. To this is implementing state law. And so, you know, to to the extent that the state has set forth a certain standards. You know, we I I don't believe that that would create any risk or challenge related to our housing element. The the issue of the accessibility and the electric vehicle parking station aspect of it is that one area that we're we're trying to sort of vet out right now. And I think, you know, we've communicated our thoughts on that.
Councilmember Bert.
Thank you. So I I would say that to frame my question that this this law is a kind of a blunt force instrument. I've been a longtime supporter and received a lot of criticism for supporting reduced parking for transit oriented development. Particularly where they have TDM programs, particularly on low income housing. In fact, all of our affordable housing projects, I think, have reduced parking. And so that concept is a good one. But a blanket prohibition of any parking requirements, including for disabled people, including our EVs in that areas is a problem. And my understanding is that the legislature is looking at changes to this law this coming year that would make it hopefully more refined. I don't know what those might be. So that leads to a question that as as Director Late was kind of pointing out is there's just so many complexities and nuances if we really try to look at how to sculpt this in a more constructive way. Provided within what we would believe and we can get into that discussion is the latitude under the law. I'm interested in where we stand on the downtown housing advisory committee. And whether that might be an appropriate vehicle to refer consideration of a more nuanced approach that would address some of these problems with small parcels. Perhaps with residential in Lufy's and other related matters. While the legislature is looking at this year at what changes they may choose or not choose to make to this law. Is what's the status of that group? And is this something that maybe could be referred to them?
Thank you, councilmember. And that that is something that I've given some thought to as well previously and I would say that the committee is there are a a couple of members on the committee that I believe have the technical sort of skill set or awareness of design and implications that would enable a very narrow subset of the committee to engage on that as a as a whole. I I think it may not be the best use of their time.
Well, I think that sounds potentially the right task, which is a subcommittee of that, which is often the case where you get folks with adequate domain expertise and to be able to really help provide us with a thoughtful set of of refinements. Thanks.
Councilmember Stone.
You, Mr. Mayor. Well, I I agree with Councilman Bert's assessment of this being a blunt tool. I I think it is another disastrous and imprudent decision by the state with this mandate and continues to disrupt various goals that not only the city has, but what I also believe to be the state's goals as as well. I mean, we desire greater adaptation of electric vehicles. States is going to be mandating all new cars sold in the state after 2035. Be all electric. And yet here they are precluding cities from investing in the necessary charging infrastructure in order to be able to meet that increased demand. Now, although that frustrates me, I'm I'm more concerned about the removal of accessible parking for those with with disabilities and question the kind of future we're creating for those with disabilities. Yeah, I I disagree, although I understand the state's logic regarding removing parking within a half mile of of the train station. Yeah, I think first I think people are within walking distance of a train that they're not going to need cars. I don't think that's I don't think that's true. I think that's hopeful thinking. And until we are able to invest in the necessary public transportation in the Bay Area, people are going to continue to be able to need those cars. But second, where that logic is most fatally flawed is that people with disabilities in particular need cars in order to be able to get around and and can't rely on on the ease of being able to walk a half mile commute to the train station. And so if disabled people don't have accessible parking at their home, then they're not going to be able to to live there. So I think essentially what the state is saying is that that's too bad. Live somewhere else. And I I just think that's both legally and and ethically wrong and it should not be a policy that the city promotes. So I, you know, I'm I'm open to removing the the EV requirement here. I think we've done a good job at investing in in public EV infrastructure around the around the city and in particular in the downtown. I think we're going to continue to be able to to do that. And that continues to be our our policies, but I'm especially concerned about ensuring the need for accessible parking should be something that's required. I I I am another concern, though, of course, is this is this balance of how do we make sure that we are achieving the type of housing development and growth that we want to see in in downtown while not while we're not putting more barriers in the way. And so I think this is finding that balance is is going to be necessary. So open to some potential exemptions for projects maybe of a certain size. To be able to be exempted from some of the requirements that were that we're talking about to tonight, but do you think we should stand firm on at least the need for some requirement for accessible parking?
Did you have a question?
I hope you all agree.
This was a question round, so I thought you were leading up to a question. That's the only reason I asked.
No, I do not. I can I can ask. Who do you? Do you think the Eagles are going to win? So I got sorry, Mr. Mayor, I wasn't paying attention to the round that we were in.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll I'll think I'm the only, oh, no light came on, but I I just want to say my my question that that at the end of the debate frankly is do we have enough knowledge with this complexity to make this kind of decision tonight? That's not a kick a can down the road. That's can we make the right decisions given the the number of options that we might have to look at? Even within the, you know, what I think is the the legality of the of the law. And as I thought about this, I did think about the advisory group, but I felt like PTC is built for this. They're up to speed on it and that's a logical place to to put this, albeit they've already had it. But some things have passed since then. So that that my question in general is we should think about whether we want to deal with this 100% in a motion tonight or not. Councilmember Vicker, Vice Mayor Vicker.
Thank you. So just want to make sure that the backdrop is I'm thinking about it right. So you know, with EV charging. We can, we still have our, you know, EV plan and we plan to, you know, do all kinds of things to upgrade our you know, increase our EV availability. And we can do that. You know, on the public parking lots more if we think we need to counterbalance this and we could do it. I know Councilmember Bert has some exciting ideas about light posts and things, so given the the expected number, I mean, set aside for a moment cost and, you know, do we have? Well, trying to figure out what's in it. Obviously, we're going to have a very detailed strategic EV plan, but if we chose, we could 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 compensate for the the EV parking spots ourselves, right? Because I mean, we're looking at increasing the numbers around and publicly public parking spots.
The city could establish, if I'm understanding your your question. Could the city establish its own policy utilizing its existing resources, public land to advance its infrastructure, EV infrastructure? Yes, we believe that you could be able to do that.
Thank you. And and I know Councilmember Richter was exploring in Lufy structures and swaps and all kinds of creative, interesting things to to facilitate that. But I guess that I also wanted to ask about the accessible spots. And just generally But I guess that I also wanted to ask about the accessible spots and just generally supporting our community that needs accessibility. What, what is sort of the default for, if any, for ADA sort of loading zones as opposed to parking spots? Because some people with disabilities would drive their own vehicle, but many might not and could live in a community where they are, need to be delivered with extra space for loading and unloading, but perhaps don't need that vehicle then to sit there while they're sleeping or doing other things. So what's the default right now, if any, for sort of ADA accessibility for vehicles as opposed to then housing them in a parking spot?
Yeah, I, I don't know what, I don't have the answer to how we designate certain public parking spaces right now for loading or ADA spaces. It's, we usually, I think, get it based on a request or a need that's been identified. But there, there may be more to it than that.
I guess what I'm getting at is that the business or residents might not, I don't want to confuse accessibility with parking, right? Which tonight we're talking about having a parking space for the ADA vehicle and a spot where it can sit, whereas somebody could be driven up and dropped off. And that's, that's a different concept, but I think, I, I don't want us to think the person can't access the building if they live there. It's just they can't keep their vehicle there.
Council, Vice Mayor, I believe the way you're describing it is correct that we are, are transportation staff to work with individual property management as may be appropriate in order to ensure that access issues can be addressed, whether it be through loading zones or disabled accessible parking spaces. It is, as Director Late pointed out, really on a one-off basis as opposed to a program. So ultimately, not unlike what you were just referring to and with respect to EV spaces, the city could undertake a more comprehensive approach to try to address that more proactively than on a request basis.
And because the, the sites within the half mile of transit hubs are limited and identified, if we wanted, I assume we could increase the number of loading zones doesn't sound quite right, it sounds, but, but anyway, accessible loading zones for lack of a better phrase.
Yes, whether it be specifically identified, disabled accessible spaces, loading zones, drop off zones, or a variety of forms that that could take.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, you want us to reserve our comments for the next round? Is that correct?
Which is starting. Yeah, this is a pub.
I should wait till after public comment. Yeah, thank you.
No other questions, then let's do public comment.
Our first speaker is Amy A.
Good evening, Council. My name is Amy Ashton. I'm Executive Director of Palo Alto Forward. And as we said in our letter, we urge you to reconsider the EV and ADA amendments to the ordinance to implement AB 2097. That's mouthful. These amendments create a barrier to housing in areas exactly where intensified multifamily development is what we want to see. These additional requirements further muddy processes that we are working so hard to fix for housing. As a resident who lives mostly car free and cares deeply about the health of our downtown areas because I rely upon them daily, these changes also complicate simple improvements for university and Calab businesses. Staff hit on the challenges and even thinking about nexus issues. Is a fee for a larger ADA or expensive EV charger spaces different than a typical parking space? Where will the spaces be installed and when? There are a lot of questions. Our retail committee has been working so hard to make changes to help businesses be successful. This would be a new barrier to their success as well. AB 2097 is a tool to unlock the power of transit oriented communities. It's an essential step in reaching our lofty climate goals. It's one of many difficult steps we will need to make in the future. Move forward with the straightforward implementation ordinance changes. But please, if EV and ADA provisions are still something you want to move forward with, they should be priorities. Allow planning the time to analyze how we can prevent them from becoming barriers to housing and barriers to success of our local businesses. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ken H.
There we go, unmute. Oh, you cut my time way down. Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, fellow council members. My name's Ken Hayes with Hayes Group Architects. I hope you've all read my letter. It was included in the packet. Obviously, this is a complicated subject and needs further study before amending the code, as Director Late has explained. AB 2097 exempts housing development projects and other projects from parking requirements in most of the downtown and Calav areas. The proposed ordinance language allows the exemption of parking afforded by AB 2097, but requires a project to provide ADA and EVSE installed spaces for the total parking otherwise required, but not provided. I think this will have a chilling effect on housing production. Take a common 5,000 square foot site in the CDC zone proposing a mixed use commercial and residential project of 5,000 square feet of commercial and 10,000 square feet of residential with 10 units, maybe half or two bedroom and half or one bedroom. This project would otherwise require 20 parking spaces for the commercial and 15 spaces for the residential portions. The ordinance language will require the project to provide one ADA van and one EVSE van for the commercial portion. And separately, one ADA van and two EVSE, and one of those would be van for the residential portion for a total of five spaces. The CBC parking requirements are separate and additive for commercial and residential uses. These five spaces will require 77 lineal feet of space since each van space is 17 feet wide. See the diagrams at the back of my letter. If the property is bordered by rear alley where parking could be located, the parking will not fit on a 50 foot wide site. But if it did fit, locating parking on a site at the rear reduces ground floor retail area by at least 28%. Existing assessment district parking can help offset some commercial parking, but it cannot help offset any of the residential parking or parking for new commercial floor area above the ground floor. There are other issues as well. Locating accessible parking off an alley is hazardous, inequitable and unsafe, requiring disabled users to navigate alleys to get to the public sidewalk to access the main building entrance, since it's discriminatory to have them access through the back door. Having every small project provide ADA and EVSE spaces creates a disproportionate number of these spaces due to minimum CBC parking ratio thresholds. Properties that have no alley or are not allowed curb cuts would not be able to develop any housing because they could not accommodate any parking. The INLU program does not solve it for commercial parking since new commercial floor area above the ground floor is prohibited for INLU participation. The INLU program also does not help residential uses since it does not apply to residential floor area. For both commercial and residential uses, 2097 exempts the parking requirement. However, the ordinance as written still requires ADA and EVS.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is John S.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lowing, council members and professional staff. John Shank with Thwaites here. I am going to echo Amy and Ken. I hope you read my email from earlier today as well as it. And I'm mostly focused on the CDC. It sounded like Ken and Amy are as well. As the downtown neighborhood, the number of competing and conflicting city ordinances and regulations combined with the realities of lot sizes as Ken was reviewing, make this a complex issue to say the least. I have a three minute speech ready to go on pounding on all these specifics. But given the tone and tenor of tonight and what, what they've shared, I think I'm just going to beg that you listen to the staff presentation and if, and I found it helpful to go back to the November staff report and going through all of that. I thought the slides tonight were very eye opening, seeing all the other cities that haven't made changes. And I don't think that's, that's because they don't share the concerns about ADA parking and EV charging stations, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's respecting the, kind of that, that interpretation of the law and really leaning into finding a way to help housing be built. All kinds of housing be built in these half mile radius sites around major transit. So I, I, and I also think there's just an added, I think, an added, added complexity of the downtown and the Calav area are the parking assessment districts. And I was, the parking that they've been allocated on the engineer's report, et cetera. How does that come into play with all of these other things? And I don't have an answer, but I just know it's one more thing that needs to be looked into. My ask tonight, given what I'm hearing and how well presented the staff presentation was, is that you afford staff and I think the PTC as you see fit to really have the time to look into this and make sure we don't create some internal inconsistencies or other things that cause problems for the market. And all that means is Amy has more hurdles to generating housing and we don't want that. Housing's hardly ever made sense to build in the downtown. And we don't need to add any more reasons for that to continue to be the case. It's, construction costs are out of this, out of this world and we need to not make that happen. I love some of the ideas around how to address ADA, how to address EV stalls without saying they have to be built on site. And I look forward to helping find solutions. Thank you very much.
That concludes public comment on agenda, item eight.
Thank you. Returning to the dais, Councilmember Burt.
Thank you. So I think we all have come to concur that this is a complex issue. We've been presented with a state law that has no nuance to it. And we're struggling with what would be a right solution, at least for these subsets of ADA and and EV ready charging. I think that one of the, the traps that we are being asked to fall into by some of the speakers is to look at what the impact of what we're considering would do, which they would say it would increase the parking by, in the example that Ken Hayes had, by almost 20%. But if we had had a proposal come to us a year ago that says, we think you should reduce parking on all commercial and residential development in the downtown area, including remodels that trigger the term development by 80%, we'd all go, holy smokes. That is a drastic measure. But, but we're being asked to say that if we, if we say no, 15 to 20% of what we would otherwise have required for those specific purposes of ADA and EV charging, that somehow that's unreasonable and a deal killer. I do think that there, there are important nuances. Not all parcels downtown really lend themselves to onsite and a whole bunch of other things. I, I did want to bring up a couple of things on the law itself because that's one of the, the issues. I looked into ADA law at the federal level and HUD refers to reasonable accommodation. And they haven't, to my, I couldn't find anything that specifically addressed this new application of that. But they do say reasonable accommodation is a requirement is, it's any change or adjustment needed for a disabled person to use or enjoy a dwelling. And it goes on from there. So when we think about that, we haven't had any analysis of how that broader definition of the intent of ADA law conflicts with this and what would prevail in court. Now, cities and city attorneys have leaned heavily, as we saw, to a more conservative approach that says, gee, you know, we don't want to put ourselves in a legal risk over this. But I'll also note that we also haven't seen some of the record on the legislative record at the state level when this law was being promulgated. And the legislative staff, as it came out of a committee, said that this section, meaning one we're talking about should not reduce, eliminate or preclude the enforcement of any requirement imposed on a new multifamily or non-residential development, et cetera, that would otherwise have otherwise applied to the development in this section if this section did not apply. That otherwise sure seems to mean, except for AB 2097, such and such requirement would occur. And the Legislative Analyst Office, which is now the seminal review, said the bill is not reducing, eliminating or precluding the enforcement of any requirement imposed on a housing development, blah, blah. For spaces that are accessible for disabled or EV charging. So I recognize that there's ambiguity in the law, but there's certainly a strong indication that the intent of the law was not in this direction. But because it's ambiguous, I understand why city attorneys are taking a cautious approach. Having said all that, I think a process going forward where we would do a, a combination of ask for an advisory group from a subset of the housing advisory group to provide recommendations to the Planning and Transportation Commission and go through that process this year. And in the meantime, we may have to hold our nose and allow the development that provides no ADA parking and no EV charging, which I think is just bad state law, but we, we certainly have at, at best an ambiguous law right now. So that's where I'm headed. Thanks.
Let me jump in because this is exactly where I've sort of come out. And the first thing I was going to do was read that, read that law. Because the, this whole subsection F is the substance of our debate tonight. And if you read that and understand that, the question of the legality, I think, is very clear. That's, that's why it was written, was to address things like this. So the alternative is just to let a private developer put up voluntary housing and then put any sort of ADA and EV on top of that. But I think that virtually guarantees that you're going to get zero because they don't want the extra costs. And we, and we can't predict anyway if they're going to put up any voluntary. So I'm, I'm in the same boat of saying, you know, we're, we're throwing out 80% of the parking. So if, if you think it's legal and you think it's a problem, then the question is, will this hurt? Will, will this hurt development? Again, more speculation. But I think that there's workarounds here that can, can help. And we've been talking about some of them, but right now we're telling somebody who, who is an ADA folk that, you know, unless you have a bus stop outside your door, you cannot live here, which is basically what Councilmember Stone said, because we can't live here, you just can't. So what, how, how do we enforce our ADA laws and be moral citizens and tell that to our citizens? That just makes no sense to me at all. It's also laws around ADA, but I'm, I'm actually more concerned about the diversity that we stand for and the morality. So I think this clearly has to be addressed. Some of the things that have been brought up in Mr. Hayes's letter and otherwise, I think are, are very well taken. The, and, and staff has already said anything in process is going to go forward naturally, but that's on, on the record now. I totally agree with that. I, I totally agree that smaller lots have a greater, greater financial burden for some of these parking spaces or ADA spaces. So I think part of the analysis from PTC or, or the advisory group has to be, you know, what's the right number? Is it, you know, we don't enforce this for 5,000 square foot units or 10,000 square foot units? The problem is we don't know it tonight. So it seems to me again that this, this needs to be kind of moving on a little bit to the, to another committee for some activity. I think that the priorities, as Councilmember Burt, as Councilmember Stone pointed out, are clearly are clearly ADA over EV. So as we look at this, I'm, I'm comfortable with that priority, particularly what I just said about ADA. But I, I would look at that. And at the end of the day, I still think that, you know, the, the, the law is very clear that we would be putting the number of spaces, let's say, right now, it's just for ADA, otherwise apply to the development if this section did not apply. So instead of voting tonight on this, I think we're better off to potentially, potentially just refer it, or we could vote, for example, that we want some ADA spaces in here for sure. And with that direction, take it and look at some of these other options because of the complexities that have been, that have been put out. Okay, Councilmember, with that in.
I'm going to affiliate myself with the comments you just made and Councilmember Burt just made. No need to comment further.
You're next, right?
Yeah.
Councilmember Baker? Oh, sorry, Councilmember.
I just want to confirm the default position between your and Councilmember Burt's dialogue. Is the default position that we would adopt interpretation two or interpretation one pending these updates?
I, I didn't, I didn't say one or two. I, I'm saying that we could either have no vote and just refer this to a, to a body, which I think is probably the PTC with input from the other body.
So actually, I would be recommending that we adopt option one on the interim basis, which would say that, to the extent a developer voluntarily provides parking, and there will be developers who will say that for their own market purposes, they'll put a certain amount of parking on site, that parking must be, have ADA and EV charging in proportion to the amount of parking that they're providing.
The voluntary.
Consistent, the voluntary one, consistent. But the, it would have to be consistent with our regulations on the proportion of that that would be ADA and EV.
Right. So I think that's one, George.
Okay, got it. That's useful to confirm. And maybe staff could call me out here, but just to confirm, every AB 2097 project proposed so far, of which there are only a few, because of course, it's relatively recent, state law has provided voluntary parking. Is that correct, Director Lee?
I'm only recalling the one project on Weaver Lake, and that does have parking on site.
Okay. I also recall.
I'm sorry, but what about the former nut house? Do we have an application there? You, you, you should.
So that preceded, well, that one also provides the parking on site. And it, it does, and they've received a building permit previously.
I think it was very tiny, though.
They have three or four, or something like that, parking spots in the back along the alley.
Yes.
And those include both EVSE and accessible spaces.
That's not proportional, right?
It's proportional to what was provided. Consistent with option one, it is not proportional to what would have been required.
Got it. You're right.
So, and that was maybe some parking, but a 70, 80% reduction in their parking.
Yes. And I think of that also as a case study of a reasonable and actually good outcome from AB 2097. The alternative project that they initially submitted would have required them to kind of demolish a kind of addition they had at the back of the nut house and put in tandem parking if they wanted to preserve some outdoor dining or public space, you know, on a pedestrianized street. So I think that's an extremely reasonable and encouraging outcome. But I also, of course, understand the negative externalities and the risks. I'd also just throw in that I think the Townhome Project adjacent to Town and Country was going to seek reduced parking requirements from AB 2097, but that it did provide at least two, generally two parking spaces for every unit anyways. And I don't know what else is in the works on AB 2097. So those examples that I do know seem to provide that. I think I'm comfortable moving ahead with the default position of interpretation one. I think exploring in lieu programs, I think exploring reduced parking requirements, in the sense that that could reduce the amount of accessible and EV parking spaces is good. I think exploring an option which we've discussed in the PTC and also is alluded to in the staff report of the city encouraging accessible spaces, like the city marking parts of curbs and so on more aggressively to be accessible in a way that provides accessibility to every block or every, you know, reasonable place someone will want to be, or even where some, someone would want to live. And I'd also just echo another sentiment from Mayor Lyle, and that I think PTC is the best group here, given that there's technical expertise that we want to cover Calav and downtown, and that we also, for the context of downtown, don't want to just consider the downtown housing area plan, but also I think Town and Country or things like that, or it, it just adjacent areas are extremely reasonable to consider for this as well. And those are my comments.
First one, you.
Thank you. So I'm going to take a slightly different tact than my colleagues, and it's why I was asking some of the other questions earlier. Because I was kind of where several of you are in terms of looking at the exception in F last time. But I've reflected on it, and I actually feel pretty strongly that interpretation one is the better interpretation. And it seems like we're beginning to center around, at least temporarily going with it while we explore other things, which I will come back to and, and agree with. But I, I actually think it's what we ought to do. Because if you look at interpretation two, which requires the EVSE and the ADA at the regular level, as a practical matter, it's the exception that swallows the rule. Because almost every time you're going to have parking spots, and that was not the, the intent of this. And typically, courts don't like interpretations where the exception follows the rule. Those fail if there's an equal or better interpretation, and we've got that here. So, and that's interpretation one. And it's, to me, just the, the way I would say, to phrase the exception in F under interpretation one, which I hadn't really been comfortable with last time, is that it's basically saying, "We can't make you do parking under AB 2097 of any kind." But if you choose to provide it, you can't get out of the EVSE and the accessible ones just because of AB 2097. You can't use it as a shield if we can't use it as a sword. You just, that just doesn't work. So, you know, just because we can't require parking at all, we don't want them to say we can't require a percent of voluntarily provided parking that has to be EVSE or ADA. So I think that's clearly the better argument, and I see why all the city attorneys have gone there, or apparently, or I don't know, at least the other cities that we're aware of have all gone there. And so I would encourage us to adopt that interpretation, but I also do care deeply, as we all do, about people with accessibility challenges. So if we look at incentive programs or other things we could do to encourage accessible parking, I think we should do that. But I'm, you know, and so if we want to look at in lieu and other things, fine, but I, I am still stuck on interpretation one. And, you know, thank you for looking up the ADA law. Reasonable accommodation is the standard they use in all ADA cases, whether it's parking or, you know, a desk height or whatever, you know, whether a screen you can see if you're legally blind. They're all, you always need reasonable accommodations. It's so ubiquitous that it's really hard for me to imagine that the time that it took for this to get through the state legislature, that wasn't discussed, considered, and somebody got comfortable somewhere with it. I have not gone and researched that myself, but we are where we are right now with this statute. And I think as it stands, interpretation one, that says only if the parking is, is voluntarily provided, do we require this percent ADA or EV is the way I would go. Thank you.
But just pointing out, in the short term, that would be equal. Because in the short term, if we were looking at shifting to number two, in the interim, it would still be number one. So if PTC was evaluating it during the interim, we'd be going with one.
Yes, thank you. And that's why I probably said very unartfully at the beginning that I think we're kind of coalescing along doing, around doing that, at least temporarily. I would do it permanently if it were up to me, but I think you're right. In the, in the immediate term, it would be a distinction without a difference.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Councilmember Rettel?
Yeah, I mean, parking is hard. It's, it complicates design, it's expensive. We saw that last week when we were the owner, that it, it just, it was almost made some designs impossible. So I sympathize, but also, as some of the council members, Councilmember Stone had brought up, there'll be swaths of the city now that you won't be able to live in if you're handicapped, and you won't be able to visit either. If you have a friend that lives in the area, you can't go visit them because you won't be able to park. And so if that doesn't violate the letter of the ADA law, I think it certainly violates the spirit of the ADA law. So I, I really think this two is the right answer in the long run, but I think the devil's in the details. So I support, for now, passing option one and then investigating, are there better ways of doing that? One thing I think we should do regardless is, for covered parking in 2097 areas, we should exempt that from FAR. Just because if we're saying that this area is going to be short of parking, we want to encourage parking, don't count it towards the floor area ratio, just exempt it. And that will encourage people to build parking. Because if they, if they're limited by their FAR, then they may make the decision that they don't want parking simply because they want more floor space. So this would be one way of encouraging parking.
Another option that the group we've referred to could evaluate, another idea.
Exactly. I think that's something that we should consider, or they should consider.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, I, if folks are ready, I am prepared to offer a motion.
I don't see objections.
Okay. So I would propose that council direct staff to return. I, I think we need to return, right? We couldn't act on it tonight on option one.
Well, that's still the default.
We, because what's before you is a stricter regulation, and you're proposing to ease off from that, we could, you could adopt this ordinance tonight on first reading, and we will make that change on second reading.
Okay.
I didn't understand, I didn't understand that at all.
What's, what, which ordinance would we be adopting? Is it written in a way consistent with option one? Is there?
No. It, it, it's written in consistent with your last direction, which was option two. So it's on packet page 252. There is an ordinance, Mr. Mayor, that also includes other zoning changes. So you do need to adopt this ordinance tonight, regardless of what you do on the parking item. And so it does reflect requiring full ADA and EVSE based on the number that would have been provided in the absence of AB 2097. So if you want, we can come back with another first reading on consent and then a second reading.
Okay. So it would be to direct staff to return with an ordinance consistent with option one, which would require ADA slash EVCS parking based on the amount of voluntary parking provided on site. And for that ordinance to return on consent for a first reading. Second, that it would, we would direct staff to appoint a, a subcommittee of the Downtown Housing Committee to make recommendations on how we would best implement a set of ADA and EVCS parking requirements aligned with option two. And for those recommendations to go to the Planning and Transportation Commission for review and a subsequent recommendation to the council. So that, that would be the motion?
Second.
Okay. And then I'll just add one other question on, on legal interpretation of, of an exception. If the law is designed as, I think it appears to have been intended, albeit with ambiguity, as a carve-out, that's not an exception. We have laws all the time that say it applies here and it doesn't apply there. That's not a, a legal exception that goes through. It's part of the carve-out of the law. The question is, is, was that the intent of the law? And unfortunately, we don't know that. But for whatever reasons, perhaps including that, the legislature is going to be re-examining this law to some degree. We'll see what emerges. But I strongly suspect their re-examine, examination is, at least in part, around the same reasons we're struggling with. And whether it's just a clarification of the original tenet of law or a remolding, we'll see what comes out of the legislature.
Still waiting for the language before we comment on the motion.
I do have a question for the maker, who can talk about this while we're typing it up. What do you see as a trade-off between having it, the Downtown Committee ponder it and then refer it to PTC as opposed to PTC just doing it directly?
Because I think that there are members of that Housing Advisory Committee that have real architectural and domain expertise that doesn't reside in the citizen representatives on the PTC. I think those representatives will be well-suited to then scrutinize a technical recommendation and make that recommendation to us, but not necessarily the best suited to compose what they're going to consider. And they can, they'll be able to accept or reject or modify whatever recommendation comes to them from that committee.
There we have some language.
It would be actually a first reading on consent. Is that correct? And then a subsequent reading on consent. And under the second one would be recommendations to the PTC. I, I think up in the first line would be the best place, where Downtown, Downtown Housing Committee to make recommendations to the PTC on how, how, rather than we would, how to best implement. Right. You can omit that. I think that looks right. Great. I think that's good.
Sorry, I think Councilmember Lou was up first.
I'm trying to think out loud a little bit about the second bullet point and how we kind of pre-conclude that option two or interpretation two will be the framework for the PTC to look at. Were you saying that in parallel, we would still want to understand the legislative intent and get a final legal steer as well?
Well, I don't know that we can do anything to understand it shy of the legislature clarifying it this legislative session.
Right.
But I. But I, I would hope that those two things would occur in parallel.
Okay.
So we'd have a set of recommendations hopefully teed up. While they're working on that, we may see indications of where the legislature's heading, but if we go sequentially, then we could have had a whole nother year on once the legislature comes back and we start this process then.
Okay.
And frankly, some of these actions may even help inform the legislature.
Did you have more, George? Yeah. Is there? I could imagine that we explore a series of mitigations and we find a way to make option one work, that we have good incentives for accessible spaces, that the city can have a tractable, effective process of distributing accessible spaces throughout our existing curb parking. And in that sense, I still think it is a big decision to kind of pre-conclude that we would go with option two. And so that is my thought about the motion. I realize any amendment to change that probably would not be accepted. But yeah, I'll think more about that.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just wondering when that clarification, Councilmember Burt, comes back, if it does, from the legislature, and if perchance it goes the other way, I'm wondering if it would be prudent to also have the subcommittee look at incentives for this in parallel. So in other words, after recommendations of how to implement the ADA/EVCS parking requirements aligned with option two, and if we could insert "and" incentives aligned with option one, because I think-
Yeah, I would, just to cut to Chase, I would be receptive to that.
Okay. I was just finishing up the language I was offering, so good. That's all I had to say.
Okay, two things. One is, I do think incentives should be looked at in general, so I think that's a really good add. I don't agree with point two, though, that we should spend a lot of time going to a brand-new committee that's not up to speed on the downtown, and then go to PTC and do, I mean, you talk about taking a year. It's just too long. And I think that PTC, this is what they do day in and day out. So if you want to get the expertise, just say that, refer it to PTC, and they, in consultation with the housing committee, and then we can get both of their inputs. It's probably going to be a subcommittee of PTC anyway, but I think-
In consultation versus recommendations, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, because then they can drive it in their normal excellent work product. So that's how I think it should be. So I would request that, at this point, friendly amendment.
Let's see. Okay, so-
Just refer this to PTC. You can leave out the whole top sentence.
Well, I want to make clear that it would be necessarily in consultation.
Yeah, I didn't get to the second sentence yet. So appoint a subcommittee, appoint, refer to PTC to make recommendations in consultation with the downtown housing committee on how best to implement, and then you've got incentives in here as well. Then we can see if we need two sentences instead of one that wants, goes five lines. In consultation with.
Rather than "and consultation," be "in consultation with."
No S on consultation.
I'm okay if the second is.
Oh, we're saying recommendation twice now. So can we just do a period after option one?
Well-
Well, there's a recommendation in the first line and the last line, so that's what I'm speaking to.
Yeah, it's just recommendation to the council. It's maybe implicit. That's why if we in the first recommendation, we just say, make recommendations to the council. All right, well, I think, actually, now I think about the structure, maybe-
That's good.
Put it toward the end. I think the intent will be clear enough. Make recommendation to the council.
Yeah, I mean, that's right, because maybe something like design is better than implement? Or even design and implement to show that, you know, we're looking for some creative work here? Best design and implement?
I, I don't think that's necessary. Whatever. Just words.
I think we want, in consultation with the downtown housing committee, to follow the word commission. Refer to planning and transportation commission, comma, in consultation with the downtown housing committee-
That's better.
-to make recommendation to council.
Okay, do we all understand it? We know what we're voting on, so let's take a vote.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reckel?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. That concludes item eight, and now we're going to be moving into a closed session with the city attorney on potential litigation regarding housing in Lufies for Sheridan Plaza. Did you want to make any other comments on that, city attorney? Or city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We did want to make one statement recognizing we had, the city council had received some public input related or perhaps related to the same address. And it would simply be to note that Sheridan Plaza was approved as condos in 1995, and that despite this approval, the owner chose not to sell the units and for the last 30 years has been renting them out. The owner does not need to seek any additional approval from the city to sell the units as condominiums, nor can the city revisit its approval from 1995. The process for sale of the units is now governed by state law and the California Department of Real Estate. Tenants may be entitled to certain protections or benefits under state or local laws, such as notice and potentially relocation assistance. The closed session on tonight's agenda relates to a narrow issue regarding interpretation of certain conditions from the 1995 project approval.
Okay, hopefully that's very clear to the public. We will return to report out after this closed session, but we don't know how long that will take. So don't stay up and wait if you want to get to bed. So we're now, we need a motion to go into closed session, please.
Sorry to interrupt. Just for the record, there are no requests to speak and no hands are raised.
Okay. So moved.
I'll second.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Reckel?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
For the record, it passes unanimously.
Okay, we are back from closed session. Oops, you're not on yet. Am I on? All right, we are back from closed session, and we have nothing to report from that item, so we stand adjourned. Thank you.